Uh. Hello, I should have looked your way. Good morning, March twenty first, and welcome to the Clickedack County's Thursday Clickedack County Commissioner's Thursday Workshop. Um, so I.
Madam Chair, may I have the floor?
Yes, you may.
Thank you very much. Um, I would just like to take this time to make a public apology. Um, to all those listening, which apparently there's only seven right now, so maybe I should have waited until there was more people on, but word spreads fast in this county, so have at her. Apparently during our town hall meeting when I was discussing. Um, short term rentals in the minutes, I was being. Um, generic enough that I unintentionally. Um, threw shade at one of our employees, Leanne, who does the minutes, and she thought I was um, critiquing. Um, her minute taking, and I, and so I just want to publicly state that is absolutely not the case. Um, I think Leanne is a phenomenal employee. I am super happy we hired her. Um, I have no issues with Leanne's work. Um, I've never had any issues with Leanne's work. Um, and I've already talked to her and asked her if I can make this public apology, and she was okay with it. Um. But I'm hoping also in this public apology, as we go through campaign season. And we go through these town halls and radio interviews and whatnot, that that maybe all of us carefully think about. Um, what we say to make sure that that there's no unintended consequences of. Uh, of what we said, I know I'm going to learn from this. Um, and so I just want to finish off with apologizing to her one more time, and for anybody else that uh, thought I was actually talking about her when I was talking about that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Christopher. Uh, so, uh, planning department update with Scott. On the refund, okay. Yes.
Turned on if I turned that way, huh?
You put me into a little bit of panic just now.
Uh-oh.
Two in a week? Oh, because of planning department update.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Oh, sure.
I'm sorry, I got lost this morning, too. I came in in a, in a whirlwind, and it takes me a second to readjust where I'm at. But thank you for being here this morning.
Of course. Did you want us to start it off?
Yes.
Okay, and because we're talking about fees refunds, correct? Okay. Um, or Lori put together a background for it. Do you want to just go through your background?
Sure.
This came from?
So back, a- as you will know, Title twelve was updated and went into effect March first. And we had a conditional use in CIPA for the Rumble Lambert um, medical clinic for simple terms. In the Trout Lake area, and they were required under the old Title twelve to do a traffic study that was going to cost over six thousand dollars. Realizing the new Title twelve was going to be adopted, they asked if they could withdraw their conditional use permit. Under the old Title twelve and resubmit a, or or just simply submit a new application. Under, in twenty twenty four, under the new Title twelve. So they did. And I brought that to your attention of what was going on, and then there is discussion. By the board of possibly a partial refund or some sort of refund, then we realized we didn't have much of a refund policy. So one thing led to another, and we're here today. And probably important to note that the Rumble Lamberts, they were perfectly happy to withdraw their one CUP application. And resubmit a new one. They did pay the one thousand twenty-two dollars for the new fee. But they both commented that was much better than spending six thousand dollars on a traffic study. So at this point, they don't anticipate getting a refund for their twenty twenty-three CUP, and they were. I guess you'd say happy to pay a thousand instead of six thousand.
Clarification question?
Yes.
So if I'm remembering reading the emails, because this this kind of chained out to all the different departments. Um, that none of the departments have any kind of a refund for any of that kind of stuff. So if we decided we wanted to do that. We would have to literally build, it wouldn't just be a this case, we would have to build some kind of a policy. Set parameters on who would qualify, who wouldn't qualify, when, how, where, whatever. If we are going to give a refund on this, I would assume we would need to come up with a policy.
That's what I would think that they want to be, and instead of a one-time thing, a well-thought-out approach to the refund policy. I, I don't know if you all have received the email I sent, um, where summarized some twelve counties I looked at. Doesn't seem common to have refund policies. I think it's generally considered cost of business. They decide how they want to proceed at their own risk. I do understand the sentiment of wanting to make sure we provide excellent service to the community and would definitely. Um, be interested in talking about a refund policy in the future. And doing a one-shot thing like this where they're making a informed decision as to when they want to apply. Um, is, is, to me, isn't the time to do it that quickly, especially because they were, everybody recently has had a pre, you know. Pre-applications, they were told they would not get refunds because that was the policy that Planning Department was assuming they're operating under.
Well, and that's kind of where I, I feel for these people, but I also kind of look at if we do move forward and develop a policy. It's going to be four months from now, and then what do we backdate this one? And then do we backdate the one from five months ago and six months ago? And I mean, I think it's just a can of work. So.
Concern we had as well.
Um, I guess where, where I'm at on this shoe is I feel for the people, but in the end, they're happy. So um, we made their lives easier. Um, so I'm, I'm fine with leaving it as is.
And I don't believe anybody's actually asked for it.
Correct.
So I would say, under our old way of doing business, a refund policy wouldn't, wouldn't make sense, wouldn't be needed because it was a flat fee. Now, since we have changed things, it's a flat fee, but then we also keep track of time and that fee could go up. Um, so if you could potentially be paying more and getting, you know, for the services, if you're not actually using the services, I understand a refund policy. And I thank you for bringing a solution about a potential for a refund policy over you in the future. I. Um, think that would be a good thing we move towards so that when somebody goes and applies and then comes to find out the whole community's in an uproar, and they're like, well, never mind. Um, a refund is not a bad thing if we haven't spent the time, because we can look back to see how much we actually spent on it per in terms of hours since we watched that. Not all departments um, follow hours and track hours like you do, though. Um, so in the future, right now, um, absolutely not moving, you know, with it, but in the future. Um, uh, maybe when you have time, we can start thinking about the refund policy. It is not the highest thing on my priority list.
I appreciate that, and I'll put in just a quick plug, and I know this will be a year or so down the road, but. Um, I would prefer to consider getting away from tracking hours and charging just a flat fee. Um, partly because. I don't know what the percentage is, but I guess probably ninety-five, ninety-eight percent projects fall under the flat fee rate. And so the time taking to track hours for those two percent that do go above, I'm not sure if it's good cost benefit analysis for the department. Also, just the um, security an applicant has, things out of their control that they may not know might come up that cause so much extra time. If they know we're going to pay eight hundred dollars for this permit, that's something they build into their expectations and their loans, whatever it might be. If it could be eight hundred dollars plus who knows how much. And I, I, they feel like with, because of that, you know, you to the average mode median mean all that. Um, those few outliers do take time, but usually you can, can capture that as long as your fee is just enough to, to balance it out. So I'd like to consider that in the future, just kind of put that as a thought.
That's great, in the future.
The future, yeah.
Yeah, no, I, I'm intrigued. I, I am curious of that, you know, five percent of the projects that. I mean, obviously, we're still direct billing for solar and wind and those things, so calm down, internet. Um, but. I, I would be curious if, if we set a threshold. So if there is something that we know is going to be over the regular permit fee under your scenario. You know, you want a fifty-five home subdivision kind of thing, and we know that's going to be over the eight hundred bucks. Then, then we can do the set fee plus time on, and just kind of change the parameter. Is I guess what I'm saying, right now, we do, you know. Time on everything, maybe change it to time on anything over this dollar amount or this scope or something.
That's what we had, and it was set at a million dollars. We had.
Right.
Years of discussion on it with the public, and this is the direction it went. Um, I wouldn't recommend you go back and review all those email or all those meetings that we had on it and the reason why we went to that place. But, yeah.
It is, I would like to keep that on the table as an idea. Um, where my last job, we did revise our fee schedule, and everything's a flat fee with the exception of certain projects, mostly energy projects. Where that was a flat fee, I think of five thousand dollars plus hourly beyond that, if it did exceed. So that was more of one, whereas we didn't track every project, but we tracked certain projects that we knew could potentially.
Well, I think.
More time.
I, I'm open to the discussion, but what I would need to see is a spreadsheet of. The projects that are being charged an hourly rate over above the fee. So I can see on a spreadsheet that really nobody falls in that hourly rate thing, so all we're doing is causing turbulence. And then.
If I may, I think it will be good that we've been tracking time for a year, then we can look to see, you know, because we made, we made estimates and averages to set our flat, you know, our fees. But after a year and enough projects, we should be able to see, you know, we can, we can take, you know, um, subdivision, or not subdivisions, but. Boundary line adjustments could go this direction. These could go this direction so that we've got a good, you know, a good estimation so that you're paying for what you're getting. Um, and so, you know, we did that with time tracking for a lot, we do years. Um. We had even exempt employees had to track their time for, you know, of hours and everything, um, and we did that for years, and it was just, so. I would say this is a good interim place that we're at right now, but um, I would absolutely in the future. Um, want to make your offices streamlined as possible so that you're not spending time or wasting time.
Right, and that's what I'm saying. I think that's the start of the discussion. If you guys have a spreadsheet that shows time. Shows all of that, we might be able to look at that and see the data and. That might. Change the core.
Yeah, and internal fee state, it might tell us some cut, some take a hundred dollars a few times, some take eight hundred, and maybe we do need to keep charging an hourly rate, others might be within a much smaller window.
Right. That's, that's essentially the data we would need to make the.
And again, we're not in a rush for this. This could be multi-year. Study.
That's all I have on refund policy, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
I don't have anything else.
I don't have anything else either. Thank you. That was easy. Thank you very much. So Public Works Discussion on Trout Lake Park.
We have another one if we could, too.
Oh, wow.
We'll sneak a small.
Depends on what it is.
It's sort of an update, but.
Okay.
And then I actually, if you have a few minutes individually, need a couple of minutes with you.
Okay, a- after.
But when you get it.
Okay, yeah, sure.
I just want to explain some of uh, the email thing. I just got another report.
Okay.
I'll leave it at that.
Okay.
Get too gary.
Yes, I think I'm on the same page now.
Yes.
I'll come and visit.
Okay.
No, you don't.
Oh, I'm kidding. No, I'm not actually. No.
Just move your chair down.
There he goes.
I don't know, but I hope he's in.
How do you think I'm skinnyer than I am?
Yeah.
For another hour, excuse me.
I thought.
We just also during our call.
I was trying to be light-hearted.
We'll just start digging.
All right, my papers are now in front of me.
Okay, Trout Lake Park, um, we've reached out to a few people. Um. I wanna, we, I. We have to be pretty particular on who we choose, because remember, there is a lot of money that goes through, well, not a lot, but there's, you have. A, the, the box isn't a big deal. And I have to be careful to say this, because if the auditors pick up on this, it's a, this could be an audit finding, we'll have all kinds of trouble. Um, having people collect money in a government organization is a very touchy situation. Um, especially the showers. Now, the lockbox, they can't get into that. You know, where that people dump their fees in. It's typical of a Forest Service lockbox. It's the same thing. You drop your fees in, but the showers don't function that way.
How does the camp host know if somebody actually paid their fees or not, just a little receipt off the envelope and hope that they're honest?
Yes, it's an honest system. We've been doing that for a long camp host. In no places does the camp host, um, that I know of actually go around and patrol.
They say they, when they walk around and make sure you got the little receipt on your car window kind of thing.
Kind of, but a lot.
How do you know they didn't put Monopoly money in the envelope and drop it?
They don't, they don't. We, it's an honest system. We don't.
The Forest Service is the same way.
Exactly.
Everybody else.
It's based off of the Forest Service.
Wow, didn't know that.
Our system is based off, it's the drop system, it's.
And I don't think half of the people that use the service know that either. Otherwise, I think you'd receive less money.
I don't know, we, honestly, we very rarely get burned, very rare. Um, our other concern is, is unlike the Forest Service, which has pit set toilets, ours are not pit set toilets. They are water with showers and everything else. Whoever's the camp host has, you know, part of their deal is to clean the showers and clean the bathrooms. And again, I'm not able to try to get one for free, but that's where we always ran into people going, I'm not cleaning the bathrooms. I'll do the host thing. You know, I'll, I'll run around and, you know, people can ask me questions and stuff, but I'm not cleaning those bathrooms and those showers. Especially in the fall when they get real nasty after the mushroom pickers come.
Well, that, do the mushroom pickers actually camp there? Or they just use it to clean up?
They just use it to clean up.
So the question is, can we have bathrooms that don't have showers?
Hmm, ours have showers now. You'd have to either, you'd have to dysfunction them. But there, the camp, and that, a lot of people camp there because of the showers.
Right, and they come off the Pacific Crest Trail.
Yes.
They pick them up and bring them down for the shower.
Yeah, that's a big thing. Again, we're, and that's, um, Trout Lake. Um, gets a lot of Pacific Crest Trail, and that's a big stopover for them. And a lot of them camp there, and some of them don't. Some of them just come in, take showers, but they go into town.
They, yeah, and they send Trout Lake Community, actually sends a volunteer bus up to get them.
Exactly, so it's a big thing.
Community. Can I speak?
Please.
Ready? Okay. So, you know, this seems like kind of a complex problem. And we appreciate the community of Trout Lake and want to do anything to encourage and help them. But then, um, I know that in the recent years with um. A music venue being busier, uh, closing at two o'clock in the morning, and then they stay in the park traditionally. Our sheriff has had to visit there more. We have complaints from the neighbors over noise, complaints that there's just no way to control that situation. Finding a proper host is harder and harder, paying for the host, um, the budget isn't carrying itself. Another concern I have is what's happening with many of the RV parks and other parks is transient people come in and set up. And they set up shop saying it's public property. I can be here. There's specific law, I believe it's like seventy-two hours. If you don't get them out, then you're in an eviction.
Mm-hmm.
Problem, which is five thousand dollars or more. So the park, we're not, we're a county, we're not park people, so I guess I will push the atomic button and say, have we ever thought of selling the park?
Years ago, and this is, I, this is more hearsay, because I wasn't part of this. I heard they gave the park back to the community. Then the park got ran down, got full, and then it ended up because it still belongs to the county. And then the county ended up going back in and cleaning it back up. But again, I don't know the all ins and outs. That was long before my time.
And I don't either. I don't know the ins and outs of a move like that, but for the county. Um, looking at it just logistically, business-wise for the county, that seems wise to me. And maybe it could be managed better by a private entity.
Yeah, I, I know, like I gave the board that when Hudu ran it, we'd get a lot of money. But Hudu ran it, and the people didn't like it because the rules were too strict. And Hudu had park, you know, had hosts there, and then they also have a support group. You know, so, because they managed all the, they managed all the giffer at that time. Um, but the residents didn't like it because honestly, so, Brad, Ian is the resident, so let's, let's be honest with ourselves. Um, they didn't like it either. They were happy to see who'd go. And that's always been a challenge for us, is getting a park host that residents also like. Alan was a good fit because they knew him, even though he wasn't from there. He'd been there so many years, he knew all the, the people, and they did like him. But again, it was a challenge for him. You were right. Uh, because you had the party in and everything else going on.
And then in our society shift right now, it's even worse.
The, the good thing is we did stay on anybody that tried to stay there, but you're right, the problem was, even with the partiers. They'd call the sheriff. By the time the sheriff gets there, the real bad people are gone.
Well, the parties are, we're in there asleep.
Exactly, exactly.
Christopher, do you have any thoughts?
Um, I'm, I'm mulling your idea in my head. I don't know. Um, Mr. Anderson, why I'm mulling?
It, it came up, um, with one of the community members that I was speaking to, is could we give the park to the community? And I said, well, what five oh one C three does the community have that you could potentially give it to? Well, we can't think of one off the top of our head. Uh, if we, if we were to dispose of the property, would we have to go through the auction process of disposing the property? And anybody could buy it, and then it doesn't have to be a park and anything else. So there's a lot of, you know, potential things up in the air in the, in that situation. Um, I did speak um, with um, one of the um, raft companies. Um, and they're going through their hiring process right now, and you know, they always are trying to put, you know, between all the raft companies. You know, dozens and dozens and dozens of people trying to find places to put them. Um, and you know, they all have their, their people that come back every year that are, that are, you know, some of them. I think however, a certain number of raft guides are getting kicked out of their houses come May, and you know, all this stuff. And so, um, he thought that it was a, a really good possibility that somebody would be interested in doing it. Um, just because, number one, they're looking for a place. Number two, you know, they're not rafting in the evenings and everything else and cleaning showers and stuff. They're used to doing that anyways, working for the companies. Um, so it wouldn't be that big of a deal. Um, and then, um, I got, sent you the link of.
Yeah, and I will touch base with them.
Um, about thoughts there that if the community would like to take it on, you know, my goal is, my personal goal is to stop the bleeding. Um, if the community wants to take it on and do it on a volunteer basis, and it doesn't cost us any money. They would like to then um, reinvest those dollars back into the park, which we're currently spending on paying someone. Well, that's a win-win for everybody, win for the community, win for us. And hopefully less work for you guys, and we can come up with the policies and procedures to make, you know, it all work. Um, so either way, I think my goal is to just stop the bleed.
With the raft companies, I would suggest that we make sure we have a formal way for still like, uh, background. Vet that person that's.
That, that's my caution there. I, I almost like it more. Uh, your way of disposing, but as Commissioner Anderson said, where's the five oh one C three? But in that same scenario. Those rafting companies can get together and form a five oh one C three rather easily through SEEK. Um, and set up the organization needed for us to transfer to them, and then they can be the ones handling it, responsible for it. They can, they can have all their people using it. It, then it just becomes up to them and not.
You're thinking the raft company doing it? That, I was thinking five oh one C three through the community.
Well, whoever is part of the community is.
If somebody could.
They, you know, it isn't, it isn't that difficult to set up a five oh one C three in our county because of SEEK. Uh, you don't have to go through all that effort. You can just use them as the umbrella, so it's. Personally, I, I would, I would say I, I agree with Chair Zoller. Let's. I don't know that that fixes this year, but. I think everybody needs to put on notice for next year is going to be a whole nother story. That they either need to get on the ball and do five oh one, where we can transfer to them at the first of next year, and/or we're putting it up to auction next year.
Well.
And it's an area.
I gotta do some checking up, talk to the PA. Because I don't want to be the no guy, but I've been in a lot, depending on how the park was created. I worked in an, in a jurisdiction where the park was created by ordinance, and the park could not lose property. Period. It could not leave the hands of that jurisdiction. Now, I don't.
The thing, we left it before and then got it back, so.
Yes, we did, but that was.
We didn't transfer the ownership.
No, never transferred.
Man it.
Right, never transferred the ownership.
Which you could still do with the five oh one C or whatever.
Yeah.
We could contract for them for management.
And if you, that would be the best way to do it, because remember, there are RCO grants associated with that park.
Oh.
And that's, and Forest Service grants. There's a dump station we wanted to close and found out, we really, we, we could get in this. Hot water about having to repay the grant from the Forest Service that put it in. The showers were also put in by an RC, the lower bathroom was put in by an RCO grant. We just accepted an RCO grant this year for that park. Um. But you, you could still have somebody manage it, because when we did, when we did Hudu. The reason we didn't show a lot of money, we didn't also show cost, they took on all the bills, too, because remember, there's utility, there's electric bills. The water bills, but the water company wouldn't transfer. They were absolutely against it.
Yeah, to me, the, the. The outcome is the property is self-sufficient, and how we get to that outcome, I'm open to suggestions, and I'm open to trial and error. And if we try one way and that doesn't work, then we need to try the next way. We just need to quit kicking the thirty thousand dollar deficit. Every year down the road, so.
Yeah, I agree. We have to try different things, and I'm willing to try, you know, well, I'll contact the raft people.
But for this year.
This is the.
How do we fix the deficit problem? And I don't know that there's a way to fix the deficit problem without increasing the rates.
Well, we proposed rate increases.
But I, I don't know that it was enough to fix the deficit problem. It was a small bump.
It was, um. Again, uh, we didn't want to go too high, because then if we lose, we could go the opposite direction. We could have more of people not paying or more people just not going there.
Well, I don't think we need to adopt the rate structure of um, the Port of Cascade blocks.
Good, good.
But I think where it is, is, is low, and I think that we need to keep it lower than, you know, the amenities provided by. You know, Mount, the, um, the one up the road. Elk Meadows, um, but you're, I'm fine with the rate structure that you proposed. Um, we just need to get that, you know, up for discussion and moving forward, and so. Um, I think we have a little bit of time with finding someone and putting it in the paper like we had without putting the cost there, just say we're looking for someone. Um, it would, I would also ask that we reach out to the Forest Service. Um, uh, in Hood River and ask them what they are paying for the person at the put-in. Um, that they have there um, in BZ to see, you know, where that is. Um, and I think they actually probably have a lot more throughput and traffic and everything than, you know, the nice sleepy park up there. Um, so we definitely need to be under that in terms of values. Um, but yeah, I want, the goal is to raise, raise the rates and reduce the costs, and. Um, I fully hear what Commissioner Christopher was saying the other day, where how am I going to be charging taxes to someone in Trout, or in. Goldendale while subsidizing people camping in Trout Lake? I hear you.
Well, it's not even so much that, because we do that every day. We, we transfer money from one side of the county to the other side of the county. To me, it's, it's more of a, how do I? Do property taxes on somebody that's poor? To subsidize somebody that's got a hundred thousand dollar IV.
That's what I was agreeing with.
So, no, we will, um. We did do survey.
Do an analysis of, if we adopted your rate structure, what would the revenue have been last year? Under your new rate structure, to see what that margin's gonna be.
We will do that. We did, we did do an analysis of parks like ours in the area. That's where we came up with the rates. That we just, we looked at them, seen what everybody else is charging, and then we tried to be right in that ballpark. So that's where we came up with the rates. I mean, we can't compare them to Elk Meadows. Can't compare them to Cascade Blocks. If we could, we'd be happy, but.
I would say the other option that we haven't considered is. I would say the other option that we haven't considered is, um, the Forest Service is taking over the, um, takeout in Husam. Uh, the Forest Service has taken over the put-in and BZ. And maybe the Forest Service would be interested in running that park. Because a lot of the campers in the summertime do come from, um, the Pacific Crest Trail and that's where they.
They do. They're huge. And we've reached out to the Pacific Crest Trail Association to see if they have somebody.
Well, see, there you go. You could just charge more for the showers if they're that high and in demand. And that big of a mess to clean up. It isn't really the camper's problem. Let's charge five bucks a shower.
We do charge quite a bit of shower, I think. Um, and we'll look, because we looked at the showers. Um, we also looked, cause the showers are the biggest issue for us.
Uh huh.
And, uh, we did look at taking, we, we, again, we've tried some things over the years to try. I mean, uh, one year we are, we did a bigger portion with no bathrooms. And just did Santa Canes because we didn't have a host. Um, that was not received very well by the public. And the public came in and that was changed. I just gave a, that's, that's how that happened. Commissioner Anders is probably very familiar with the group. Um, then we were told, don't open the bathrooms, bring somebody down there.
Yeah, but back then the county still had money.
I know, previous board, I'm saying.
They didn't leave us with a lot of money.
Previous budget.
Yeah, previous budget, yes.
Previous revenue streams. Can be a lot of hard choices made in the next couple of years.
So we will do that. We'll continue to pursue. Um, we can, I'll talk with the, the P A and talk, I mean, we could look at bonding the person.
Do we need, um. Do we need a public hearing to change the rates or is it just a public meeting?
I think it's a, let me check because we, we took the rates out of the ordinance years ago. When we redid, when we redid the rules, so we didn't have to.
Do on.
Do the rules.
Put it in the paper and everything.
Yeah, we could just do the rates.
Are my seatmates good with moving forward with the, the rates, um, getting that in front of us?
So I will see what the scenario is. If it was done by ordinance, then we would have to do it by ordinance. But I don't know if it requires a public hearing.
And what, what was the total increase that you figured that the change in rates would, would equal over the year if, if all things are equal?
Uh, we still have to do that announce.
Okay.
That was the question I had before I wanted to approve the rates because I look at those rates and go, wow, that's dirt cheap.
The rates went up approximately ten percent.
Right, but inflation went up seven. So did we really pencil out? Probably not.
Probably not, no.
My point, are we gonna go through another year rate-wise, kicking the can down the road and end up with another thirty thousand dollar deficit this year? So I would almost rather see those numbers on what it would do to the deficit. This year, because we might decide we want to move the rates from twenty to twenty-five, at least it gets closer.
Uh, so just so you know, the Gifford Pincho National Forest, um, campground rates, um, just a single tent, fifteen night, uh, fifteen dollars. Uh, double site, thirty dollars, um, premium sites, um, and this is just a park is thirty-five dollars. This is without, um, power and without water.
And without showers.
And without, without shower access, but you gotta pay for the showers. So.
You gotta pay for that.
Right, right, but it doesn't have the amenities is my point, but, but again, and we want, you know, twenty bucks or something. So if we could get more towards these numbers, that would be good.
I think ours are higher than that. I'd have to look.
You gave us the thing. It's not on my little spreadsheet.
It's not on my spreadsheet either.
Page, but I, I would, I would like to see this. I mean, whatever the board wants to do, it's their budget this year. But I would like to see us move forward with more self-sustainable this year instead of just waiting to try to plan to do it next year.
No, I mean, we could go up. I'm fine with that. Uh, we will look at, I'll look at where we are at for rates. I could have swore they're thirty-five for a tent camper. And cause there's nine power units there that have power. The camp host takes one, so now you're down to eight.
Okay, so, um, state parts of, state parks of Oregon. Uh, a standard hookup with sewer, electricity, water at the site is forty-seven dollars. Uh, a tent site is twenty-four dollars. Um, just electric is forty-four dollars. So that's at state parks in Oregon. Uh, hiker, biker, eight dollars.
Yeah, so I would, I would like to see the page on what we charge again. Um, what your proposed rate hike charges are, where the budget deficit would be. And then I guess I'd say what it would be under the numbers he just gave and what that budget deficit would be. And then I, I'm ready to decide.
Yeah, what we'll do is we'll bring the information, because again, we did sample the parks that have the same thing. We did not come up with the numbers out of the air. So we will bring that data in, we'll look at other data that's outside. Cause we looked at Mary Hill and, you know, all these other ones. So we'll check those. I'll, I'll bring that information and we'll bring it in. And we'll also bring in if we go ten percent higher, twenty percent higher, board can ch- decide.
Right.
Where it's.
That's, that's what I'm looking at because I'd kind of like to see your comparables. Cause to me, that and Mary Hill are polar opposites. Uh, the people that stay at Mary Hill are not necessarily the same people who stay at Trout Lake. The people who stay at Trout Lake are not necessarily the ones.
No, that's true. That's true. You, you're kind of limited. Trout Lake's kind of a different type of a park, honestly. Because it's right in town. You usually don't have parks that you stay in in town. And we actually looked at that as an option, to be honest with you. And it, uh, the board at the time chose not to do that. That was one of our proposals. Take away the campground part of that.
I mean, I'd also be curious what.
And just make.
The day park.
And just make it a day park.
What gunkle charges down here at Peach Beach? Cause that thing is constantly full and.
That we, we did a comparison to Peach Beach.
I thought when I was through there last, I looked at the rates and went, wow.
We looked at Peach Beach as one of our comparables. But we also, that's another, we looked at that as an option. Taking away the camping element and making it a park because typically when you're around an urban setting, you have parks.
Yeah, like a day use for parties.
Yes, day use and they could, somebody, you know, like the community could get it during the fair and allow camping that day. We had, we'd actually looked at that as an option, because then the park is still the park. And it becomes a lot less. Cause at that point you don't have a host because you don't, you don't have people staying there. But again, those are different options. We'll bring more options.
I, I understand the park's gonna have. Deficit because we're having to put in water lines and dig up this and replace that sewer. And, and I understand those things. That is, that is kind of a form of government to own and manage parks. But it doesn't mean that the RV part of it can't be a little more self-sustainable is kind of where I'm concerned.
Mm-hmm. So if we have a minute, can we go through something real quick?
Sure.
Okay.
Reason I picked today over Tuesday is I wanted to keep it. Uh, I don't want, I'm not gonna mention any names, because I want to keep names out of this, but wanna let the board know where we stand with. With, uh, maintenance nets.
Okay.
Uh, the reason I wanna go down.
Are you gonna give us a definition of maintenance tech and what their job duties are? Okay.
Projects. So here's where we stand. I'm gonna just, so our foreman in Glenwood, we moved, he became our su- our equipment supervisor. So we also had, um, a guy in White Salmon retire. We had another one resign. We had a guy in Glenwood just move on, uh, his. For personally, he didn't come from, is from another area. He just went back home. So he moved on. We're also, when we hired another guy in Glenwood, we hired him as a, cause that was the only position we had open. With the agreement, when we got that position open, we moved to Glen, to Golden Day. So he's at, and that's where the arrow here is, cause he'll go here, cause we have an opening in Golden. So that leaves us five openings in, on the west end and one opening in Bickleton. What we're proposing is at this point to leave the opening in Bickleton as it is. Um, we have. We have a guy that's getting close to retirement, Golden Day. When that person retires, we would probably fill the position in Bickleton and leave the position in Golden Day. I can, you know, I've only moved with the people I got, cause I'm not gonna pay them to drive from one area to another. So we would go out to add for four positions. We already have to add for one. I got the approval for that. We have three more on the west side. We can leave a position open on the west side and position open on the east. That book is saving money. I can't, it's still gonna take us a while. I could leave them all open during the summer. The problem is I can't leave them all open during the winter. Or you guys would, I'll be honest, you guys would get inundated with falls. People wouldn't get out. Cause we, we staff up for plowing. But we've sat down, we looked at it, we made it through, we can make it through the winter. Less one position in each year. Uh, we may even look at in the future two, because we may have to lower the service rate. To some people that are out, but it's hard because we've done it forever. And when, you know, somebody living out on, they moved out there, they knew it when they came. But when they have to get to the doctor and they can't, because we've had a snowstorm and we have plow. That doesn't, nobody wants to save them. Or they can't get out or, you know. Years ago, we, we hit, when we had the bad winter with the massive snowdrifts, we were pushing in with cats to people that hadn't been out.
Right, but in the, the same regard, I spent yesterday in Bickleton and, uh, pretty much everybody I talked to was talking roads. Yes. So same idea, if you save a hundred thousand dollars here, you're gonna be able to take that hundred thousand dollars and spend it on a road. That's kind of the purpose. You have a road fund, right? Well, you don't spend on employees, it's spent on asphalt, technically. No?
Yes and no. Problem is, is you think, you know. And general fund is in trouble. Remember the road fund. Never got levy increases. So the road fund has gotten one percent and the cost is going up just like the general fund. For years, that's what the million dollars was originally for, but they didn't need it at the time. It was to backfill all the years. We didn't get the money. So I'll be honest, we get five point four for maintenance, two point five of that is wages alone. And then another two point five is equipment. We have to pay for our equipment. That tells you, that gives us four hundred thousand dollars to use in materials and that is it. That's sand, gravel, anything else. Now, the two point five that we say equipment covers the fuel and all that and the repairs and all that stuff. But that gives you four hundred thousand dollars in equipment, materials. I could burn through four hundred thousand dollars in materials, gypsy.
Right, you're gonna burn through that and just your gravel contract.
Crushing contract is a little different. That's E R and R. That money is charged. The road pays that back and it's, as they use it, they pay for it. And then when we get a, a pot, then you go out and crush. So we kind of manage that. It's like, it's like the bank and it's, it's.
Is that coming out of the four hundred thousand, um, the materials that you're banking into E R and R or where's that going?
That goes back to E R and R.
No, but where's it coming from to go into E R?
Road.
I know, but which part? You said two point five.
The four hundred. So it sounds like he's putting.
Yeah, the four hundred.
Okay.
That's true. So what we've done to offset some of those and change that, how we've made it through the years is working for other people. You know, we do work for White Salmon. We do work over here on different projects. And when the road crew does capital, there's a different budget. The capital budget, we, over the years has gone down. Cause you know, again, a million dollars, that's where that went.
Right, but that, that kind of goes back to my question. If two point five million is wages and you have two less employees at a hundred thousand an employee. That should be two point three. Now you have two hundred grand. Where's that two hundred grand going? Is it going towards equipment or into this four hundred thousand?
No, it'd go towards, it would go within the four hundred thousand.
As I said, you'd have a little more money for rock and.
Yes.
Not much, but.
No, but it also helps us balance the four percent increase that we got and versus the one percent increase.
I get it. Okay, got it.
So it, it helps. We have to, I mean, we don't have a choice. We have to.
So it's, it's probably not, what you, what you're saying is, is it's probably not gonna increase the amount of money you have for materials. Those two employees not being filled is just gonna be playing for the colas for the rest of them.
Yes, exactly.
That makes more sense. Okay.
We, um, we do an amazing job in this county at plowing and keeping the roads open compared to other agencies and other counties all over the state. Um, because we had the available resources and the staff in order to do it. Um, we knew this was coming when we started cutting the million dollars that we took from the landfill. Some of that went into this building. Some of that, you know, is, you know, continuing to go into other things where we've cut that down. And, um, I wanted to say thank you for bringing ideas because knowing that that's a huge chunk of change, one way or the other, that was going into the program that we have to manage. We knew this was coming. Thank you for bringing the idea forward. If this is what you think is the best way forward to try to keep that going, I am okay with, you know, reducing that by one each side. Um, I don't like it, um, but I'm glad that we're doing it through attrition because we know this is going to get worse, not better. The question I have is we have always taken the one percent for the road, correct? So we don't have a banked capacity with, uh, to use. Okay, I just want to make sure. So we are, we have pulled the levers and now we are in essence, reducing service like we knew where we would be when we made the decision to start cutting from the one million.
Yes, and the board may or may not have an opportunity, not that it would be a lot. I know Commissioner Anderson's followed, or all the commissioners do, but Olympia and that talk in the future and what. Crab has been a big push of this to allow the increase in property taxes. But then again, that falls on the board and that's a very tough decision to increase people's. But it's levy rates. So again, it's different. That's why crap's pushing. Because people usually are more, are more willing to pay road levies, cause they see that.
Mm-hmm.
And they know it can't be moved anyplace else.
I, I would agree with you that there, the general public usually does not have a problem. Uh, with increase in road levies like they do with general levies. So I would agree.
And, you know, it may, they may lift the cap. Now, you, probably being, next great chair might be more familiar with where we're at, but we're.
Are you talking the one percent camp that it failed and it's not likely to be coming forward to pass in the next biennium?
Yeah, I know. Grab was talking, Wasdak was talking, Wasak is talking, pushing forward.
Right.
The weather, the legislature, come on, listen to it.
It, it, it crashed and burned.
The cities were still pushing hard, right?
Cities were pushing very hard, yes, but it, it got ugly.
But, but sorry to take all the time, but I want to let everybody know. But we will do the one and then try to fill the three. We figure it's gonna take us all summer to fill the other three. Uh, but, uh, we've been working with Rob. We can't get C D L drivers to potentially. Hire people out and train and then do an employee contract, which agencies are not. Which means we can't, we give you the training, you work the rest three.
Yep.
If not.
You pay us back for the training.
And a lot of times we get people, for us, it's important that they, that they mesh with the crew.
Yeah.
Those are the options.
Yeah, I, I just, I kind of also wish there was a way that. Since we really need the bodies in the winter and not necessarily in the summer, that I wish there was a way we could not have them in the summer and have them in the winter. But I understand people don't like working six months out of the year and then looking for a job the other six months unless you're a teacher. You get paid enough in your six months that you can just go on vacation the other six months.
And we have done that for quite a while. We, we've stayed under. I mean, we dropped an extra, when I got here, we had four people. We dropped it because we hire in, we hire people in winter. They're usually our retirees. But you know, people are working longer, either out of necessity or. And you know, by the time they've done it for thirty, forty years, they're like, I ain't. Deal. We've also looked at, we've bridged a lot of gaps with contractors. But that can cost a lot. That's gone up quite a bit. I mean, now it's three hundred dollars now, plus.
So I guess I'd say, my question is this, how many employees are in public works, not buildings and grounds, but road?
But road?
I'm talking office staff, engineers, flaggers.
Road, I don't know. Road, I don't know, it's, I'd have to go back.
Can you eyeball me or, yeah, I know, nobody hates giving me ballpark. I'm trying to figure out how many people are in the road department, coming out of this two point five million, and how many of them are actually driving a plow truck?
The two point five million is just road, just these guys, right? That's it. Road has three different budgets, we have capital, admin, and maintenance. The two point five is just these people you see on. That's all.
Not engineers and-
No, they come out of a different budget. Engineers are mostly paid for the grant, for the majority.
Interesting.
These guys, you can't-
What about office staff people?
Office staff people are paid for out of road ad, but like I told the board one time, road picks up, the admin for facilities. Everything, everybody's based with road. Which is good for the general fund, because if they were based, most counties have a facilities department.
And it's completely separate from-
It's completely separate, we have it together, so every time I work in facilities, Seth works in facilities, we, road pays. I don't charge facilities. And we don't charge, you know, that all comes out of road. But that's, that's road ad, that's a different part of it.
Well, that's what I'm trying to figure out where that part of it comes from, if it's not-
Gas tax, right.
So, but it does come out of the road levy of the property tax? So, it is part of that number, part of it, and part of its gas?
Well, no, it's not part of the two point five, it's a different part, there's more than just the two point five.
It comes out of the five point six of the road.
Yes.
I'm just doing the math here.
Yeah.
There ain't much left in your five point six.
No, they're very low.
So, it comes, a portion of it comes out of the total five point six, but a lot of it comes out of the gas tax that's paying for that.
We get gas tax and then, that's why we're so aggressive getting grants.
But then, with the grants, you're also charging the grants too, yes.
Of all the, all the engineering staff charts grants. For the most part, I would say, what do you think, seven, thirty, sixty, eighty, four, eighty?
Eighty, twenty.
Is granted.
Yeah.
That's why we're so aggressive.
Right.
Does that keep our people busy? And, not only does it keep our people busy, it gives the taxpayers their roads maintained, heavier maintenance, that they are not, but, the hundred percent filled, I mean, there's a little, everybody pays tax, federal tax. You know, if we can get our more than our share, which we usually do, that's good for us. So, I think that's all I have, if there's questions.
I, I still appreciate that we're, we're looking at this far enough in advance that we're using attrition rather than having to go down a different path.
Yes, yes, we will always look at that every time speaking.
Thank you, sir. And you thought it was gonna be a short little conversation.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Jeff, one question. But it's kind of been me and ask for two weeks.
Yeah.
A whole road, whole mess of dump trucks and all sorts of good stuff, happening up and down a whole road, but it sure doesn't look like county trucks, do you have any idea what's going on in there?
Yes. We're chasing BPA around. Again, they don't need a permit for my, well, that's not true, they actually helped us out by putting rock on the road, but they have different permits. We treat them the same we do anybody else, it's not BPA, it's a contract. But BPA is doing work on it.
So, all they're doing is putting some, putting some rock on the road, greater on the road, whatever, to try to improve the road, so that they can get their equipment down the road and work on lines, that's what-
Yeah, they're, they're on their own roads, but they're rocking their, what for, they don't have to come to us for any permits if they're not, because they can drive on a road.
Their own road, I didn't even know they had roads back there other than a hole.
They have roads to maintain.
All through the private?
Yeah. Yeah, so they're working on roads, because we've done, uh, you know, we've heard the same thing, so, we did some investigation, and, we send a guy out, he said, well, thanks for putting rock on a road, he still,
And thanks for putting all that rock all over her shoe band too, as you're driving in and out. I appreciate that.
We don't like that, easy.
Said if I drive my motorcycle to work, I'll have to do it in oncoming traffic lane, but-
We don't want that either, but we'll, we'll have a discussion with them about getting that off.
Little brush action on there would be nice, yeah, yeah. Thank you, I just had, uh, some questions from some neighbors, so.
Our ten AM shows legislative update, legislative discussion, but Heather, are you on our agenda somewhere? Okay, great.
Well, but I would like to talk about, I wanted you to serve the legislative discussion to talk about some serious redistricting issues.
Thank you.
Potential redistricting.
Yes and no.
Oh, I'm aware there's an appeal, but I'm also aware that he'll probably get anybody.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, I did watch your town hall, um, I think it, not that you asked for my opinion, but I think it went, um, pretty good. Uh, I do have to, uh, correct the record a bit on redistricting. It is not the auditor's gig, it is actually the commissioner's gig, the county legislative authority is responsible for redistricting. Um, it, and in some counties, the auditor's office has absolutely nothing to do with it, so, um, I see it as a partnership, that said, um, I don't think it was handled in the best manner possible previously. Um, and I am willing to work with the board, um. Currently, um, there's an RCW that allows you to redistrict, um, after four years, so we can look at redistricting in twenty twenty six.
Um, what are you required to?
You're not required to, but you can, you can look at it.
But, am I correct, and for order for us to redistrict, we're gonna have to, well, we as a county, speaking of all of us, are going to have to change precincts and, boundaries and all sorts of fun stuff, so it's not a quick, like, three month process.
No, it's not, so, um, the commissioners of many county may authorize a change to their electoral system pursuant to RCW twenty nine A ninety two forty, except when necessary to comply with the court order, and except in the case of an intervening census, um, and a voluntary change every four years, so, um, we can, we can look at that in twenty twenty six, from a, from a global standpoint, that is RCW.
Centurion.
Thirty-six, thirty-two, twenty.
Voluntary change every four years, since we haven't changed it, I don't know that-
Well, I asked for a PA opinion on that, as whether or not, since we didn't actually make any changes in twenty twenty-two, where we allowed, and, and they said, no, you've still gotta wait the, the four years.
Um, but I thought in, we were required to do it, and that's why we did it.
We were, we adopted a new plan, but it didn't actually make any changes.
I know it didn't make any changes, but, but we didn't choose-
But we were required to look at it.
So, you're required to look, how often are you required to?
With the census.
With the census, with every ten years, right?
Revisited it, yes.
So, that's, that's, that's what we were trying to point out with it, we did, you know, we're not required to change it, but you, if we were over the three percent changes or whatever, then we'd be required to change it, but we, we fell underneath that, correct? So, we weren't required to, to make amendments, correct?
Well, I, I, that's up to interpretation, but yes, the judge ruled that we weren't required to make.
Right, but I guess, I guess where, where we were talking about during the town halls, I was saying, you know, it would, you, and you brought it up to ten years, like, and it was with the census, we're required to look at it with the census. I didn't know about you could, after four years though, you could look at it, I thought it was just required.
And that's why I brought that up, because through my conversations with the auditor's office, it sounded like,
We don't have to wait ten years, we can, we can revisit it sooner.
Maybe, and I don't want to speak for her, she sees that some of these precincts are too large.
So, okay, now, hang on a second, because precinct splitting and redistricting are different things. Now, it's also the county legislative body's requirement to change precincts. It's, it's not my gig, you guys have to adopt new precincts and, and redistricting. Now, we have access to information that you need in order to make those decisions, but this is, this is a-
It's a partnership deal, but what you're saying is, is it's up to this board to say, we want to do this, and then invite you to our, um, group, and hope that you're willing to help us. We're not waiting on you to decide to do precincts or redistricting.
Correct.
We as a board need to vote that we want to move forward.
Yes.
And then invite you to our party.
Now, um, and I have not had the opportunity to discuss this particular piece with the PA, so, um, it, it needs to be run by the PA's office before anybody runs anywhere with it, but, this court order, should it hold with regard to the legislative redistricting, may also, fulfill the requirement that except when necessary to comply with a court order, because there is discussion in, the, the motion that resulted in, the, the order with regard to the new legislative districting, that discusses, how Clickitat County's commissioner districts don't fit in with the Yakima territory boundary line, and, um, it's suggested that this new legislative district lines that they've drawn has remedied that, I don't entirely know what that, what that means, and it's, it's currently an unpopulated piece of the district, but they talk about the disparity, of that line with regard to Commissioner One and Commissioner Two districts, and suggests that those district lines, need to be fixed to comply.
Interact.
So.
So, that could mean if I'm interpreting, and I could be interpreting wrong, it may end up redistricting for us, to not put all of Trout Lake in one, but to put all of Trout Lake in two, and then add Appleton and everything else that they put in this thing in one.
I, I don't know.
That's it.
And I don't know whether or not, if, if the court order just talks about that, line with regard to the, the Yakima territory, whether or not that opens a broader scope. I, I mean, it's, this is a, way beyond my skill set and, and needs to, I mean, it's a bigger discussion.
Looking at the line, though, the Yakima, the track D is all in District Two.
Yes, and it would include the community of Glenwood.
It's, it's already all in District Two.
It wouldn't be uninhabited.
Could be thinking.
I don't know which one.
The only issue you would have is, um, District Two and District Three cut, um, and you have some of the nation reservation lands up here that are unpopulated.
Right, but they may not be qualifying as a residential, uh, res-
They also have-
Reservation land, they could be calling it reservation peoples. And there's a lot of them in the Appleton area, which might be why they-
Thank you.
From the court.
Okay, thank you.
But, but whether or not that opens it up to a broader redistricting, I don't know, so what I'm, what I'm suggesting is, we may have some mandatory redistricting that happens, um, with this, but it, it may present an opportunity to take a broader picture. Um, when we talk about redistricting, uh, that is really, well, we have access to information, you know, you have to look at geographic boundaries and communities, and, it's a complex process that really isn't in the skill set of my office, I mean, it's, it's a big process, there are vendors out there, um, that offer that service, that have, you know, more skill and, and looking at, communities and meets and bounds and, and all those kinds of things, so, if we're going to go down that path, whether it's, you know, like tomorrow because of, of the, a court order, or whether it's in twenty twenty-six, because it's what you want to do, um, I would highly suggest hiring a professional to, to analyze all of that, but that's not necessarily a discussion for today. Um, so-
Thank you for that.
Right, but, but you're saying that depending on the outcome of this court thing, we may be required sooner rather than later, maybe.
Maybe.
What do you take another court order, or it requires to do it?
Well, that's what I'm saying, is I don't know whether this court order constitutes,
Doing it new.
It's a sufficient court order, um, because I can't, I can't quite tell, and especially since we don't have an overlay map that shows the census blocks, or where our precincts currently fall, based on this, you know, current-
Line?
N- new line, I don't, I don't have all of the information in order to, to really speak intelligently to-
So, you, that was one thing that I was looking at, I was looking at their map, yellow and green, and I was trying to find something that could overlay our precincts.
Uh, which-
So, that, and I'm not finding anything, and you're saying you really haven't found anything either, to be able to tell.
Which doesn't that make, when you make the ballots, because now you've got this artificial line that doesn't fall, follow precinct boundaries, it's gonna make it a lot difficult.
So, you're, hang on, you're, you're getting, you're getting ahead of me. Cause the other thing that is now complicated, and keep in mind, I'm short one staff, although I did hire somebody, and she starts the first. Um, we're still trying to wrap up the March election, and we mail military ballots for the April election tomorrow. So, um, you know, we got a, we got a few things going on, but, um, RCW twenty-nine A sixteen fifty, states that every voting precinct must be wholly within a single congressional district, a single legislative district, a, um, single district of a county legislative authority, and if applicable, a single city, so.
See, there you go, that's-
We now, so these are, these are-
Dale Commissioner District One.
So, these, these are precincts now that we're talking about, not Commissioner District, we're talking about precincts. So, we now have two legislative districts within the county, based on this map, which means we have to go look at all of our precincts from, you know, Goldendale West, to see where they fall, and we have until April twenty-six, because, um, you can't do anything within a week of filing week. And then we can't do anything until, uh, the day of the general election, so basically, we have, four and a half weeks to take a look at all of those precincts and decide whether or not those precincts, need to be changed, because they can't split, um, legislative districts.
Do we have enough time to move precincts? And do we, are we required to hold a public hearing, uh, in order to do that, to re-adopt?
Y- y- yes. Um.
I love the legislature, they're so great.
No, this is not the legislature, this, this is the judicial, not the legislature.
Well, the legislature, uh, yeah, well.
I don't, I don't know with the precincts that we have to hold public hearings, but you do have to adopt it. Um, and it also needs to still, you know, follow visible, physical features and-
So, would only affect, it would only affect the legislative district boundaries and not commissioner boundaries, their map? Or am I now gonna be in District One, is my question?
Um, I, I don't believe right now it's changing commissioner boundaries.
I was gonna say technically, we'd all three be in District One if it followed there.
But, um, you know, it certainly puts, you in a different legislative district than you, you would have been in, um. I, I think it, no, Clickitat I think is still in fourteen. This little blue piece that goes up in the green, I believe is Clickitat.
I'm in the seventeen.
A- and I think that Dan is also in the seventeen, because it comes through Centerville into Goldendale, but again-
Has somebody seen a more detailed map, it was pretty high level, the one I've seen.
Yeah, no, that-
That what you get is what you get, it's gonna boil it up.
Is, is what I have.
Yeah.
Yes, but, based on kind of, so if you, do you guys have a copy of that in front of you or close to it? So, in, in the east side of the, the green of seventeen, that little swoop in, based on kind of looking at topographical maps, appears to be the bottom of Rock Creek. Um, and this other line of, appea- the, what would be that, the bigger, indent into seventeen appears to follow the Clickitat River. So, it's going kind of up and around Clickitat, and then coming back down into, to gra- So it's going kind of up and around Clickitat and then coming back down into, to grab Centerville and Goldendale.
But they didn't follow our precinct maps when they built this.
I would guess not, but I, I haven't been able to confirm that.
Well, I.
I, I probably need to work with um Public Works and see if they can't give us. Because they're the ones who help us determine the um census blocks and kind of make sense of those. And see if we can't get an overlay of what this looks like. But I, I can't imagine that we're going to get away with not having to change some precincts. So that they're all, you know, because it's like. Probably, you know, Lyle, Wishram, part of Goldendale. Because some of the Goldendale precincts kind of, they're not just the city of Goldendale. So all of those areas along the edge likely have to be.
So we're gonna have to move. East Lyle precinct, West Clickitat precinct, um, the Centerville precinct is gonna have to take a change.
Well, as long as it's, the whole precinct is encapsulated.
But this is cutting precincts is what I'm looking at. I'm going from map to map and I've got the precincts held up.
Yeah, I can, I'm, I'm great at mapping up as well, and I can see. I see you sharing screens. That's what I was just sharing from your own computer. I, I mean, maybe. I'm looking at the northern border of the Centerville precinct compared to the map. And it's, it's possible that that's just Centerville and Goldendale three and then. Some of the, the northernmost river or whatever precinct that is up there.
There's your, there's your voter precinct.
So but part of, you know, part of the problem is that it's not at the same scale. So trying to do. You, you know, the overlay a little bit, but you can tell the big bump out, right? And I mean, there were, there are some geographic markers that we can clearly track off of. But.
Did Centerville looks kind of okay, but if you look at the left part of Centerville, it actually goes up on one forty two. And on your little map at Dell or on the state's little map, the eastern, northern, northern, western. Portion of Centerville does not.
Okay, well, but keep in mind, see, and this is where you're gonna get into the scale thing. If you look at where number fourteen is, if you draw a line from that square corner on that map you're looking at. All the way across just under the number fourteen across the top. That's really where our county line is. So you, you, the scale is a problem.
So we have no idea until they give us better than that essentially.
So.
And it, you know, they don't. The, the, the state has a, a deadline of March twenty fifth or something like that. So we won't, we won't really know and, and, and whether or not this stay.
Stay or not.
Yes, as, cause as far as I know, we haven't heard whether or not the court's granted the stay.
I guess my, my next question would be, is there any value in sending a letter to the court? This, that would say something like, um, we are required to follow district or, you know, the, the district lines. You are in essence giving us four weeks in order to change our boundaries to match this because of the requirement. How are we expected to do this?
My guess is it can't hurt. I don't know that it's gonna change anything.
Well, I guess.
I would argue it ain't even four weeks because they can't even start on it till they get a map that shows decent lines.
That actually is, that has full lines. I, you know, in terms of for the stay, I, it's a ridiculous amount of work trying to figure out how you're gonna change these lines. Because whenever you change these lines, you're gonna have to move other lines on everything else in order to keep it the same. I mean, that's practically a full redistricting based on, I, I don't know how you get it done in time.
Can I tell you what my twenty twenty four motto is? Embrace the suck. This just.
Well, and it makes absolutely no sense that Centerville is lumped in with white salmon. When technically Lyle and the Dalles have far more in common than white salmon and they're closer. It just, it just. You, you will never convince me that this is nothing more than to make sure Ms. Mossbrooker's house is included in.
Yeah, so.
Well, and the court order addresses the idea that it has made um the fourteenth legislative district. More Democrat. You look at page ten.
That was the whole point of it.
Yeah, no, that was absolutely the point of the gerrymandering that took place.
Uh, I guess, I guess, you know, the court does what the court wants to do. The court is looking at this um potential stay on appeal. The court did not take into consideration the rest of the laws that the court is saying. Because otherwise, how are you going to use that to then create um ballots for people that are now in seventeen?
Figured it out. Look at the easternmost point of Dallasport, below the little Dallasport hump. Where you get into the Lyle Clickitat pink portion, south pink portion. No way does the boundary on this map even resemble anything.
No, it doesn't.
With that map. So I guarantee you whatever's there is gonna have to get re-precinct.
And, and so I guess the question is, is how long does it usually take for you to, granted, sorry. How long does it usually take to recreate the precincts? So that you can then put out your, you know, ballots. That's a month-long process, right? Trying to get them all.
In my, what am I, in my ninth year, I think we've never, we haven't done any precinct changes since I've been with the Auditor's Office. So I can't, you know, I can't speak from personal um experience. Brandy can, I know Brandy did the redistricting in um, not. This last one, but previous one, and it was a whole lot of work on, on her. Um, I don't know that, because we're talking about potentially so many precincts. It's, it's a lot of work. And then we have to send letters to everybody saying, hey, you have a new legislative precinct. Um, and so it's, it's a lot of work. It's, it's. In, in a very short amount of time.
Like when you, not everything follows precincts, right? Like school, schools don't follow precincts, do they? School, you know, for like levies for school districts and all that. They don't follow.
Well, a school district has its, its area.
Right.
And that may encompass, it may, it may all be in one precinct. It may be in multiple precincts.
It can cut precincts and then you have to figure out how to put it on the ballot if you're in this, this ballot.
Right, so this, this precinct could have, you know, white salmon school and one fire district. And, you know, another precinct could have the same school in a different fire district or whatever. So the, the schools don't have to all be in the same precinct. Or the fire districts don't all have to be in the same precinct. Those can split. But the legislative congressional um commissioner. All have to be lumped into a single, single precinct or a precinct can't split. So we can't have somebody voting.
So how?
We can't have, say, you know, take Lyle. Lyle can't be voting. One Lyle precinct can't be voting on fourteen and seventeen. It has to either all be in fourteen or it has to all be in seventeen.
But does anything else but schools can be divided? Because each precinct can only vote for one county commissioner, kind of a scenario. But is anything else other than schools that you can divide a precinct or a hospital district, I imagine, or an EMS district would probably do that. Split like a school.
Yeah, it, it's, it's legislative authority. So it's the, the county legislative authorities and the um congressional and legislative districts, those.
So how can the court adopt a map that doesn't follow our precincts? If it's required by law that they be in the same precinct.
Because they just tell us we have to change to conform with what they decided.
To make sure their voter base can be on the next map and be assured of wins.
I, it seems to me like it's a very good reason that there needs to be a stay. Because ensuring that you put, you have to follow their map to recreate the precincts, to follow the legislate, the, the changes to the legislative map. And expecting it to be done in four weeks when we don't even have a, a G I S map of it. Is a tall order.
I think it's worthy of a letter.
Yeah. And maybe it could be a potentially a dual letter um from the legislative authority, the auditor. Um, and hopefully the prosecuting attorney to the court. I mean, they have to make a decision in four days, but they probably haven't, aren't even aware of this.
Lots of things with government are done in vacuums. We just make it to the decision and then, you know. Let it all roll downhill and, you know, I mean, that's. But um, when you guys talk about, totally aside from, you know, this precincting issue. Um, none of your current legislators uh remain in District fourteen. Gina, Chris and um.
Curtis.
And Curtis King are all currently based on this map out.
Yeah, Chris is apparently in a new district and the person in that district is resigning. So he's gonna run for that office, but I have no idea what Gina and Mr. King are gonna do.
I, I thought I read something and, you know, again, I haven't checked the, the validity of the report. That he was going to move so that he stayed in the same district, but that was just, I mean.
Who was?
Um, Curtis King.
I, I, I've read that somebody was gonna move, but I thought it was somebody else. I haven't heard anything on.
Anyway, but I haven't, you know, you can't believe everything you read, so I don't.
But, you know, Gina might.
But I've not heard.
Gina technically can just move to the property right up here that the family owned. And now be in the fourteenth district. So that one might be an easy fix.
Yeah, I don't, that's, you know, not my call.
Whole nother election voter base, but.
I still don't like that, you know, Curtis King is not gonna, you know, he's been our bridge champion. And now he's no longer representing the bridge, you know, his big thing. It's just, this is sad. This is just sad.
Well, I mean, as long as he's still in the, the legislature, he still has a voice.
Yes, no.
And he can still.
Well, let's just hope that this keeps getting appealed until it gets to a court that has some common sense.
Okay, should we talk about the legislative discussion or do you got more? I mean, it would be great if we had the prosecuting attorney in with this conversation about what our options are. Because honestly, um, I feel for you. This is difficult.
I appreciate the sympathy. Anyway, no, that was just um. Just, you know, the latest um shakeup in. So I just.
For the record, can we get um this discussion added to the agenda? So that when we come back to review it or anybody online reviews it, um, uh, if my seatmates don't mind. So that. No, 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 for today, you know, our, our, on our minutes and everything. So that when you look at the agenda online, this is added to it. So that when people want to go back through the minutes or the recordings, you know, to this conversation up. I have a feeling we'll be looking at something. Thank you.
I think that's all I have to say on the topic.
Since we're moving.
Happy today, not.
Since we're moving into the legislative discussion for twenty twenty um five. Is there anything that the Auditor's Office um or the Auditor has um that we would like to have Zach Potts and Associates? Or even WASAC move forward with, with legislation that um, that you know is gonna be a hot topic? Either for your organization um or even here locally.
Um, I don't know for our organization, we meet um in May. And that's when we decide our legislative priorities. So I don't, I don't have that information yet.
But I guess the other thing is, is here locally, you know, Potts and Associate represents us, you know, WASAC represents everybody. Your organization represents everybody, but it's, it's impacts to the Auditor's Office locally or legislative. Changes that we might want to push separate of those other organizations. Is there anything that you have on that?
Rank choice voting should be a no, no way, no how, never.
That may, that, I think you, that is actually because it is a hot button issue, topic. It, they got brought up at WASAC um, and if, I, I have no problem with the board, you know. Ensuring that Mr. Potts knows that is the direction that we would like to see that going.
Yeah, and i- it's a bit of a divisive issue in, in my association. Um, although some people are coming around to that. The city of Seattle is running a test pilot ranked choice election next year, I think. It's convoluted and it, you know, it's. It's convoluted. We'll just leave it at that.
Keep it on that side.
Yeah, so anyway, but that's, that is, my opinion is never.
It takes a lot of computers.
Well, it does, and, and there's not one particular way to run it. And, you know, so the legislature in all of its wisdom tends to just say, well, we should do this. And not look downstream. I mean, look at this, right? We, we just changed it to make these, but we didn't address precinct issues and, and all of these other downstream impacts. And so, you know, if you, you decide that that's the way they want to go, but they don't define how it, you know. We could have the city of Goldendale run a race and rank choice voting done one way. And the city of White Salmon decide to do it a different way. And now, now what do we do? We have, you know, like, you know, non-ranked choice voting election and two different kinds of ranked choice voting elections, all in the same election. What do we, what do we do with that? I mean. It's, they, things aren't thought through from start to finish. It's just.
Elections have consequences.
They do. So does legislation and um.
Well, the election.
And words mean things and. Okay, man, so that's.
Anything else you can think of? Okay, thank you. So um, I was just trying to make a list here for the legislative discussion. From my perspective, um, the priority um, and now it's working with WASAC. Is fixing the um taxation on the renewable energy projects.
Number one.
That is, that is the number one. Uh, number two that I have on my list is um the other fifty million dollars in state funding for the Hood River Bridge. Um, if we don't get the hundred and fifty million dollar grant that I was speaking to earlier federal. Um, because currently, according to our current allocation of what we've asked, it was two hundred million from the feds and the feds showed up and did that. And then it was a hundred and twenty-five million from each state. Senator King brought us seventy-five million. Now we need the other fifty million. Um, and without that other, and, and Washington and Oregon are playing this game. That if, if one, Washington won't release dollars until Oregon allocates the same amount of dollars. And so Washington could have a hundred and twenty-five and Oregon only have twenty, but then Washington only will release twenty. And so getting us to that fifty, a hundred, that extra fifty million, if, if we don't get the B I P would be number two. For, I mean, we've got three hundred and, you know, sixty-three percent of the project funded. Now I would love to get to the finish line on that. I know. Thank you. For the record, the auditor has just stated that the new district senator from seventeen will be getting us the dollars. And she will be calling said senator to lobby for that. Thank you very much.
Who will probably live five thousand. Who will probably live five thousand miles away from the bridge.
And for the record, the auditor also said she was just being a smart ass.
I didn't hear that part.
No, I have, I have a lot of things that I would like legislative to change. I just don't think any of them have a ballpark chance in hell of getting changed. Um or. Changed for the good. They might think about it as a good way, but it turns out as a bad way, so. Stick to the things that might actually get fixed, like the solar taxation or the green energy taxation. It may behoove us to look into. The same scenario is that same taxation going to be levied on the pump storage project. Um and that might be a. Uh since it's a bigger project, that might spur more movement than just standard solar panels. So instead of just talking about it about, oh, in projects, solar panel projects, maybe we should argue the case of. You know, this is a two point two billion dollar project in the county that's only got a three billion dollar net worth. Um what's that mean?
Right.
And not sell it on solar and that, but sell it on what about pump storage?
So my other, my other ones that I have right now, um pushing um for the payments um from the state on public defense. Um which will barely likely be a WAC piece. Um um for us locally, um you know. Uh the the interim uh year got three million um for Joel for the um. White Salmon Senior Project, there's, you know, supposedly two point two million dollars left. That might be something that that we have Zach advocating for. Um and then um at the federal level. Um, you know, we've got the the the. Uh congressionally directed spending and CIP. Um, you know, it would be great. The bridge got four million dollars um from this um new house and. Uh Cantwell and Murray um from the Washington side. Um we've had discussions at the bor- bridge. Uh we're not, we don't want to be taking up all the oxygen in the room. Um and so that would be, do we wanna push for CDS for the airport to finish our project? And do we wanna push for CDS um to get Joel's across the line as well?
Both of those are started and moving.
They, you know, they've got dollars. Um and then so the other big one, you know, the question is that'll come forward is. Which is why I wanted to have a a a more broad group here talking about this, but um there's also the. Parks and Rec District in White Salmon with the pool and where does that fit on the priority list for what we're asking Potts and Associate to do? And other projects, these are just ones I I came up with in five minutes.
I I would say when I talked to Cantwell's office. I mentioned the airport project is probably our number one. He was hoping we would have a broadband. Type package and I told him we're trying to finish up the project from eight years ago before we move on to the next project. Um which he can appreciate and he's on board, but I told him that was probably gonna be our number one and that going forward, we were hoping to. Create a a list. Um of all the. Players in the county on what our opinions and and kind of a ranked list and he very much appreciated that idea. Um cuz he said that would help them out greatly. Um but in the same time during that conversation, um he offered. To have me reach out to Bickleton Fire and have them apply for half a million to a million dollar. Um for any infrastructure they need, of which talking to Bickleton Fire, they said they don't need it. So um if we create our own quick list. Um and have, say, the airport and the assisted living center. On our little quick list. Uh and made sure they all got it. At least they know where the county in general's priorities are at. Um and then they can take all the other stuff is. It's all icing on the cake. We would like the cake. All these other people would like icing on their cake, but we just want cake.
And so my next thought is is trying to think of this holistically. It's when we go for the federal or even the state, then we could do something like. You know, um we're not just asking you for it. This is also on um. Our point oh nine dollars and this is something that we're gonna put, you know, this much of a match towards it and with point oh nine dollars. So if we're, if we're asking for two point two million for the assisted living facility, we could say, you know, we'll, we will put forward ten percent of that. For that match and I'm I'm just trying to find ways to get our projects to the next level.
Right, but how do we approve ten percent without going to case PETA cuz that would be on the housing fund?
Well, that's what I'm saying is, that's what we, so that's why I'm having these conversations now so that we can go to case of PETA to say. If these are the things that the commissioners are setting as our priorities. You know, we're willing to put this much of case of PETA into it in order to match the CDS request.
Right, but you're not talking oh nine dollars, you're talking housing dollars from case PETA. Just cuz they're now housing two different things.
Point oh, point oh nine can be used for housing.
So you are talking oh nine funds and not the affordable housing.
Or we can use affordable housing. I don't care where it comes from. I'm just, I'm using that as an example.
Looks so much better to leverage if we have an investment.
Right, I I totally understand that. I was just asking what funds are you asking for?
Well, that would be the.
PETA group.
We'll have to sit down at the table and.
And can you even have a case of PETA meeting and come up with that before you have to send off a letter? Cuz I thought it was April first.
I think it got pushed back. Um the Kent Wells got pushed back, I believe.
Uh.
The last time I saw.
Literally talked to him four days ago kinda thing, maybe end of last week and it was, he said April first was last Thursday.
Well, if it's, if we need a letter, uh okay, well, that's good. Hold on, let's see.
And is there a way we can just submit the list with the idea that we're working forward with commitments on our side and then work through it?
And in all reality, I think you're asking like for the assisted living center, I think you're asking for such a small amount of money. Um that I don't think your little, you know, ten percent match is gonna be a deal breaker. Um with them, they just need to know what we need and what our priorities are and.
And we've made a lot of commitments there already. We've done some things for them with the property and.
Okay, so we've already, we've got a CDS request, Senator Murray, Senator Cantwell, Senator Newhouse for the airport. Case of PETA has a letter of support that was that that we put forward. Um and that's case of PETA, that's not the Board of County Commissioners. So there is a separation there.
As I said, is we as a county.
Do we know is is Joel putting forward an application for CDS?
Well.
Our meeting isn't until next Monday.
Yeah, well, I will. Give him a call.
Thank you.
I can go outside and give him a call.
Same minimum I would encourage him to, and then I would say the county needs to. Write a letter drafted that the county's priorities for this are these two items. And then if other people want letters or whatever, they they have. Our item was on our list and of course, we can't say no to the people that want us to sign a letter for all their pet projects. But they actually know where the county in in large stands. This looks funny and tennis shoes and suit.
That's the new thing.
You told me that last year. Is there anything that's got a higher reimbursement level?
Airplanes. He jumps into jail.
I'd like to see you take a boat from, you know, harms all the way to.
No, but it could be a business expense where I have to take, I don't know, uh somebody out, show them what.
You float that one by the IRS then.
Or we could just hire it from the independent contractor that owns it. We just rent it for day use or something. This board doesn't care about conflicts. I'm choking, obviously. Um I do not remember when we talked about the motorcycle thing, whether that should. Should I turn into? One has auto, one has motorcycle or just Adam in the same and then somebody's gotta do the math. Well, do you want them separate or do you want them on the same form?
And is there anything else on the list that we that we're aware of that somebody's putting?
Bill, we're already behind schedule. Microphone.
Yeah, I think we've covered the major ones. And ongoing that we wanna preserve.
Well, in the idea that we want to be in front of this better in future years. With some better planning in the fall to make sure we're top aesthetically ready for this versus last minute, ready for this.
Looking organized.
Yeah.
Okay, I sent Joe a message as well. Um if um. So I guess it would be at least my, my goal is is we send a letter from the B O C C. To um Senator Murray in support of the airport project. If Joel gets back to us saying he is putting in a uh CDS request, we um attach on to that. We include the White Salmon project.
Okay.
Uh for our support.
Yeah, I would, you said Murray, but I would say all of them, but.
I meant Cantwell.
I I should say I would, I would include all of them in that.
Well.
County email that.
So the, these are the, right now it's the application, right? So the application is going, it was Cantwell's application that's open. I don't think Murray's even opened her CDS um application window.
I would imagine it would be the same letter, just.
Probably.
Yeah, when she opens it, we'll just have the same one, change the name.
Um so if everybody's in favor, we can have staff draft that up and we, when we hear about it.
Yeah, I would just draft it up as two paragraphs with the two items and then if you don't. Get Joel's, if Joel's not doing it, we can scratch paragraph number two. That one is prepared.
So the other thing is, um I sent an email, forwarded an email I yesterday or so. The, we're requesting that the county submit their proposals for legislative priorities before the retreat. Proposals must be submitted by the end of the day, Friday, April nineteenth. So for us, those legislative priorities um would definitely be, and and this is for WAC. So it is fixing the renewable energy taxation issue. Um does anybody else have any other priorities? Cuz we're gonna pick. You know, the 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 urban counties are gonna pick two priorities, the rural counties are gonna pick, you know, two priorities and then there's gonna be an all. And so for me, you know, we've got the white paper on. And everything that we've done on the renewable energy, I think this is the right time to strike and saying this should be one of the renewable. Or the, one of the rural counties priorities for the twenty-five legislative session. And we should be starting this next month, getting together with a work group to start working on legislation.
Yep, and I don't personally wanna flood WAC with too many county. Things, I want them to focus on the big thing that's also gonna affect them. So I'm I'm fine with that being our item because that item is huge. Or could potentially be huge depending on the project.
Did we did, yeah, it will be. It already is, it will continue to be. Uh Commissioners or.
Did they ever come to resolve on the coroner thing with rural counties where they? Might have different requirements for the smaller counties.
So that was legislated, legislation that was written that we thought was gonna help us, the way the legislation was written, it didn't do anything.
Um made it worse.
It made it worse, um and then it died.
That's why I said I'm always very cautiously supporting anything because then it changes and your name's still on it.
That is what amendments do.
Okay.
So um. And then the only other thing that could be, you know, um so that would be one of the rural priorities. The other one would be um for the public or the overall priority would be payments for public defense. Um because with this uh was what? Just got adopted by the State Bar Association to cut the number of cases by a third. That would triple the amount of cost that we will have to come up with for public defense. Um in a lot of areas, um with that, those caseload standards um. And the Supreme Court will make the decision. Um and I believe, you know, it's still a guideline, but it's a heavily looked at guideline. Um that I would like to put that as one of the top priorities.
Yeah, I I'm fine with all of WAC's priorities that, I mean, it's like that, that's been a priority forever is to. To cover some of these unfunded mandates. Now we're just rewording what we already wanted them to do to. Include the new legislation, so. Any of the other things they wanna put forward that were already on their plate are are probably good things.
So a- and I guess the other question would be, do we wanna put forward the renewable energy priority for an all? All counties or one of, or rural?
I would leave it up to them and.
And in our discussion, what we have. It, so I'm just looking for consensus so I can respond back but to.
No, I I I believe all three commissioners are exactly on the same page. Uh with no. Varying opinion and no contentiousness on this issue.
I never know what we will or won't agree.
That's why, but on this issue, I don't think there's any. Or has been.
No brainer.
Yeah. Well, it is, depends on who you ask.
Okay, that that was what I had for the legislative discussion. I just wanted to make sure.
The other day that we can just make legislation and make that happen, so we could probably just strike that through and not have to worry about WAC at all.
Oh, because we're gods.
We have the authority to change that.
Who, who brought that up?
That was in the email for the questionnaire the other day.
Oh. Yeah, we didn't ask that one, but.
Asked and answered other times.
Uh did the? No, doesn't look like it.
Nobody from PA?
Well, for the.
Do we need to email and ask if they'd like to?
I wouldn't do it. I would make sure if you did it, it was not on that microphone. And you mute yourself and you're asking the question.
So I got forwarded, Elisa did ask if the prosecuting attorney would be available for the discussion on the corner.
No response?
Okay. They might have a busy schedule, but we have Heather.
Do you have questions from the last discussion? I thought we were. I didn't know we were still discussing.
I I don't think we're just, for me, we were at the point where we needed to start thinking about. If we're moving forward, what's that program look like?
I think we need to, we need to. Couple of things. Number one, we need to start directing staff to start preparing for the budget and everything for having the coroner's position. We need to direct HR to start designing. Um, you know, that the position, the description so that we can hire um and then. Oh, sorry, thought I was talking straight into it. Um so that we can, we can start that that process. I mean, and then we can need to start looking, we need to direct um. Public Works to figure out where we're gonna put the coroner position, you know, where they're gonna be staffed. We need to start having the discussion. Uh does the coroner need a administrative assistant write-off? Or is that something we can test for a while because this is gonna be a full-time coroner? Or is that something we can test for a while? Because this is gonna be a full-time coroner, we never, you know. Before it was split, and is there the workload? Can they do their own reports and everything? Um, and then the next question would be for my seatmates is, um, do we want to set up, uh, attempt to set up a time to see if Skamania County? It Commissioners would like to have a conversation about the coroner. Or not.
I'm fine with all those, but I'm not fine with discriminating. And it's nothing against Skamania, it has to do with the. Budget implications that were given to us by the fiscal manager, but. I, I don't think you jump into a program. Um, I think you take baby steps, but.
Well, we can take some baby steps with um, Skamania County, I've been asked to have a meeting pretty quick with A S A. So it's something we could talk about on a lower level.
And, and I know that, um, uh Commissioner from uh District One, um, did wanna have that conversation. He's talking with their prosecuting attorney, um, and I know District Two Commissioner is interested in having that conversation. I know that multiple other small counties that are in our same boat are looking at doing that between two counties and, and implementing it for Joe, uh, January one. Just because, you know, they do see the savings.
If uh Skamania, if those other district commissioners have reached out and said they're interested to in having it. I would like to, to have a sit down with all three, because even though we had a report, um, sometimes there's different ways to do things. And I'd like to explore those, uh, as our neighbor and partner, I'd like to look at those.
Okay, so, um, maybe what we do is, uh, which I think, you know, it's good at least that we meet with Skamania County once a year at the bare minimum. Um, for our joint meetings, I always learn something from them. I know they're really interested in having the discussion about how our implementation of our financial management system's coming along. Which I'm really excited to hear an update too from someone. Um, so maybe we can try to schedule that for, um, next month sometime.
Sure, and do we offer to go there next time? Yeah. They were here last time they traveled.
Yeah, we can go. I mean, they do like our new building.
I know.
You wanna come up and say what you said?
I had a discussion with one of the Skamania County Commissioners and I can't off the top of my head remember his name, but he's the one that's retiring at the end of the year.
Um.
About their financial system and whether or not they're moving forward and it seems like they're. He's having a hard time herding the cats is where they are with, with theirs.
And I will be with them tomorrow too for aging and disability group, they're on that board.
One of them or?
One of them.
Yeah.
And I don't know if, if Greg is on the agenda for Tuesday or not, we, for the Finance Committee update, we can, um. Piggyback on that if you want, give you an update on where we are with our.
I guess I would be curious if this board, which it sounded like in the last discussion. There was unanimous consensus to move forward with an elected position. When that option is available, how are you gonna do that if you get into a joint agreement with Skamania and then the next year run a ballot? For your own coroner that can't.
So how that would work, um, is you can, uh, like, whether, whether it's elected in Skamania County or elected in Clickitac County. It would, you would run your election, um, and then they would just do an M O U and then.
Right, but it's up to that elected official on whether they wanna run an M O U with Skamania County, not us.
Well, if we have an M O U in place, they could walk away from it at that point if they, that elected official could.
That's what I'm saying, you're, you're. I don't know. I, I just think it's messy. I think.
I think it's like baby steps, you know, let's explore it all.
I. Or can do it a bunch.
Again, you didn't ask for my two cents, but you're going to get it. Um, I think there's some problems and I don't know what the legislation you guys were talking about with the coroner. And, you know, what you were hoping to accomplish or what the problems were, but the current legislation, um. Potentially has some other issues that need cleaned up, like, you know. Clickitac County were to grow to over forty thousand, does that change the pool of people available to run and I'm, so there. Um, and I had had a conversation with Gina about some of the problems I saw with that legislation. And she was willing, if, you know, if. I got stuff together to help, you know, clean up some of that. That could potentially change, um, and, you know, now that. Skamania and part of Clickitac may be in, in the same legislative district, maybe you'll have more in common than, than you did or, or reasons to work together. Um, you know, uh, the Superior Court Judge is, is elected to serve both counties. You know, maybe that's something worth. Putting forward, um, to a, a willing legislator to propose that, you know, you could share. You know, I don't know, I don't know what the workload is for Skamania County's coroner. I don't know what the workload is for our county coroner. You, you know, whether or not you need a full-time is not, it's not something I have an opinion on. Um, I know that, say it's Okanagan County, when they first rolled over the forty thousand threshold. And required to have an independent coroner, they went with a seventy-five percent. And then moved it as, as the workload expanded, moved it, so I don't, I don't know that you have to have a full-time. Person right off the bat either, so. There's, there's lots of options to explore.
But time will tick away, so we better work.
I know, that's, that's why the question is, is it directing, directing staff to start working on it and bringing us ideas and thoughts and how we're gonna move forward? And where we're gonna put them, and I mean, we're three months into it and we've got nine months left of, well, seven, eight months left.
Mister Van Cleve, I don't think you were in the room when we talked about. Having, uh, H R start working on what it looks like for employment of a coroner.
Creating, drafting a job description for a coroner and an org chart.
I told you, it's not my fault.
Three under the bus.
You don't have a microphone over there.
I was just gonna lecture on that. I would put another microphone over there, it would cost seven hundred dollars.
Okay.
Okay. You'll do it, thank you.
Johnny Cash used to say, I hear the train coming. Thank you.
I, I didn't do anything.
She caused it all.
So put a job description together, that's the first.
And I would imagine there's also gonna be a, some kind of a salary study. Kind of idea, so we have some kind of ballpark idea to know, not many counties have it, so I don't know that you're even gonna get an answer, but we, we gotta come up with something.
Are you, are you aware if the legislation had any requirements in the job description? Uh, skills, experience, certifications, that kind of thing. There are certification requirements, but it's required that you have to do it within a certain amount of time.
Training.
Training and all that, um, but we definitely wanna hire someone who already has the training.
This would be better if we put it on the ballot right now.
Let's not start fights.
Be better.
Remember, you're gonna behave.
Not willing to go that route, but it would, would be better. I might actually get the end result that I want, cause I don't think I'm getting the end result I want, so.
Okay, any more coroner discussion?
Nope, I think, I think we've got marching orders and we'd like to move on.
Okay.
Um, thank you.
So we'll be.
Thank you.
We'll be able to set aside our Snowden Community Council discussion today. They had reached out and wanted to get with us to talk about land use planning and some things. And when I reached out and said we had time today, they were not able to attend. They didn't have anybody that could, uh, travel up and meet with us today, so I'll reach back out again to them to see when they have time to come visit with us. They'd asked to be on the agenda, but then it was such a quick turnaround for them, they couldn't get a group together to come visit. So we, so we have free time. And you walked in the room, now you're in the hot seat.
I was told not yet. Warm that one up for you.
Perfect.
I don't know if I need to be sitting in the same one. It's kind of a dangerous seat. You wanna get up here? I was instructed.
History loves company.
I didn't, never said that.
I just said, thank you.
Thank you for leaving.
Okay, so Tuesday afternoon, I had a tennis match, and so I had missed the meeting, but it was brought to my attention. That there was discussion had in regards to vehicle purchase in the building department. Um, I was able to go, watch the recording last night so I can get up to speed. Um. So I just kinda wanna touch base with, um, the board as to how. A reminder as to how rental rates are calculated and the budget directive through what we call Phase One. Um, every year in May, Phase One of the budget development is sent out to all departments and offices. Um, part of that is the V R N R vehicles. Uh, the directive is the same as my predecessor, um, set up. The directors and electeds are to add and or adjust vehicles within the list. Add any new vehicles that were purchased, note any vehicles that have been surplus or planned to be. Uh, report what the current odometer reading is and provide a replacement cost of today, at today's rates. Um, once I get those returned to me, I calculate the rental rate by using the following method. I util- utilizing the expected replacement cost at, in today's rate, whatever year we're building the budget in. Um, that, from the cost the department provides, from the state side, I also add in a five percent inflator to that. That subtotal is less the vehicle's accumulated balance from prior year's rental rate collection. Um, the replacement year is calculated by taking the current odometer reading and averaging the annual miles driven over the life of the vehicle. To produce the number of years it takes the vehicle to reach a hundred fifty thousand miles.
Clarification question. I think I heard you said, but correct me if I'm wrong. The director is supposed to check the state website for vehicle replacement every year in May.
In May.
And then whatever that number is, you add five percent to it.
I do, because we don't purchase until the next year, so with inflation. Granted, five percent isn't what inflation was in twenty twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two. It's just consistently been five percent from a predecessor, and those are one-off years. So. But if they're, okay, yes, I'm gonna go back to the, there's the, the rest of this, but yes, um. So I get the average years it would take the vehicle to get to a hundred fifty thousand miles, and yes, I do have. Miles every year tracked in Excel spreadsheets for each vehicle. Um, and I finally divide the difference of the subtotal of the account balance and the replacement cost with the inflator in it. Uh, by the number of years remaining to get to the hundred fifty thousand replacement mark. So, so long as the department and offices are collecting the accurate information for the process. The rental rates adjust annually this way, um, to reflect inflation, miles driven, in order to accumulate and a sufficient balance. When the time comes to replace the vehicle, so it'll never be the same rental rate, um, you know, if they're going out getting that estimated cost. That's gonna, that's gonna take into account the inflation, the majority of the inflation for that year, plus the five percent that I add into it. Now, if they start driving that vehicle more than normal, then the rate is going to adjust to a, to those years as well. It would take, it would shorten the life of the vehicle.
Do you know if on this vehicle, if the replacement cost that was submitted to you? Uh, was updated from the previous year's number that was submitted to you? Was the numbers the same for the last two years?
The last three, I believe.
The last three years, the number's been the same. So I have to assume that the new information from the state website was not given.
I think that was, that's what I would assume too, um. So. There was discussion about that, actually, um, and then there's another factor of this, um. Which would likely cause the vehicle to be more as well, um. During that budget build process this last year. Um, that department and I did have discussion about that purchase price, um. When I had noticed it hadn't changed, and, you know, at that point in time, if the director is comfortable with that, I have no authority over a, a director. To, you know, have them change, so if they're comfortable, then, you know, that's okay. I'm, I have no authority, I'm, I'm just managing the project of building the budget, um. So Director Ward received a quote, um, and to replace her, the Colorado with Ram. Um. So when she did, she reached out to me, we talked about it, we had a couple of conversations regarding protocol. Uh, my initial response when she asked me, um, was that she would likely need to wait until the purcha- to purchase the vehicle. Until she had the available dollars in the, in the budget to do so. Explaining to make sure they needed, needed to adjust that purchase price annually from that forty-two thousand dollars, um. When we did, we talked about in person the first week, um, of March, cause she stopped in my office, she had brought me a gift, it was very sweet. Um, and just in conversation, I had asked her about what she decided to do with that vehicle. Um, and she informed me that she can't wait to build the balance for the vehicle, um. And I told her, like, if she, if she couldn't wait to build that balance, that she could always go to the board, um. The to- the topic of pulling the accumulated balance from the other Ram that, that she has was brought up and discussed. But I suggested that not being ideal, because it would set that vehicle back and then the rental rates would. Jack up and the department is already not self-sufficient and therefore a burden further onto the general fund. Um, but ultimately, that's between her and the board.
I guess. We're very careful. That doesn't mean we agree, that doesn't mean we, we are recommending what they're asking approved, we're just not the final say.
What is the balance difference from what she has in the rental rate and, or the balance in the V R N R and what she needs for the truck?
For the Colorado that she's wanting to replace, the balance is forty-two thousand, five dollars and some change, I think, a quarter.
And we.
And the cost of the new one that she's put forward.
So she had emailed me in February with the, the initial quote that she received, and it was fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred, something.
I thought she was telling us that it was a six thousand dollar difference. Did the staff know back there what the?
There was, she had other quotes, so in March, she came, when we were talking in March, when she came into the office. There were other quotes that she had had that were much closer to, um, the balance, but I believe she brought that.
What was the ask that we got Tuesday? That we got told the difference would be, do you know the number?
Five thousand sixty-one dollars and seventeen cents for the white truck.
And how much do you know, how much we put into that V R N R balance? In this year, or put money on that V R N R for that truck this year?
The forty-two thousand, that number that I gave you is including the transfer budgeted for this year.
So even if they waited till next year, they still wouldn't have the money?
Well, they would, their rate would be the five thou- the difference, the five thousand, six thousand, including the.
Oh, so we would add five thousand.
On average each year or vehicle.
I don't have that information off the, oh, maybe I do, actually.
I think that's what you were getting at, how much do they put in each year?
Well, r- right, so my, my point is if they have forty-two thousand in there this year. If we.
I do not, actually.
I guess I would say come January first, if, if we say, nope, you have to wait till next year, do they put in five thousand dollars?
They would put in a difference to that, of what that would be, and of course.
My point is if we've been putting in five thousand, because it's a ten-year lifespan, that makes fifty thousand. So we've been putting in five thousand, next year we're gonna put in five thousand, and then they would immediately suck it out and buy the new car is the train of thought.
That's with every purchase, V R N R purchase, yes.
And in May, they would go out and look at the state contract and.
By April.
By April, right.
Well, May for the budget development, but we do have policies related to purchases out of this fund. So that would be the next topic of a discussion on my list is. The county and the board as a whole has policies on how to purchase out of this. The county and the board as a whole has policies on how to purchase out of this fund. So.
Continually don't go out to the state bid and update the price, then they're. Going to be short.
Well, I guess I would question. When the sheriff's office moved from the vehicles they had to the more expensive trucks.
We increased, they purchased vehicles uh, in groups. And so we increased the group cost therefore.
Purchase was never bought.
Purchases.
So they anticipated replacing with the higher priced vehicle and adjusted their number on.
We adjusted from the group cost being three hundred thousand to four hundred thousand.
Got it, okay.
So the rate adjusted with that.
Do we have the option, so we just opened bids from three different things for four trucks? Do we have the option of going out for bid for a truck or, or a vehicle underneath this current forty two thousand? And can we follow that to potentially get a cheaper rate than the state contract?
So I, I will say, and this is why I have Heather here. Um, that the board can do what the board chooses to do. But in order to go outside of our current policies for this fund, we would have to bring Heather into that um, to make sure that it would. Pass through the state auditor's annual accountability audit. Um, and resolutions be drafted in order to do that. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, I, I. Maybe a different question, but I think it would behoove this board. To have the opportunity. To go out to bid for all of our vehicle purchases going forward. Because you might be able to get them. Right here, cheaper and only pay our sales tax rate and have to buy it from the state website, paying ten percent, yeah. So I want the opportunity to do a bid and then if we don't like it, we can say, nope, we're buying off the website.
Specifically to your question, um. Can you or should you? That's not for me to decide. I talked to Jeff Hunter, I think he was going to check into it typically in public work.
And I, and I believe they checked um, and they couldn't piggyback one more on. So.
Right, but I'm, I'm talking about potentially looking at if our policy says you have to. Buy it from Bud Henson Chevrolet in Seattle. I would like to.
Bud Clary, you're close.
But whatever. Uh, I would like to, because again, what do they have on the lot? Oh, they don't have anything, doesn't mean it's not right here locally, it's less of a sales tax. But we would have to change our policy to allow for a public bid to even check.
Yes, yes.
And, and so to me, that, that's a no brainer because we should check that. Before we even go there, compare the two and then decide what to buy.
And that's what the board chooses to do, then staff can work to make that.
We wouldn't have to change pol, I mean, we didn't have to change policy for public works to go out for bid.
Road is not VR and R.
It's, oh, it's not.
That's the R and R.
So our current policy for it is, is we're required to buy off the state contract?
Uh huh, and you have to order before April thirtieth and it has to arrive before October first.
Yeah, that doesn't always happen though, right?
It doesn't, but when it doesn't happen, the sheriff is the last one that I recall, came into the board, there was discussion, there was new authorization. Um, given and adjustments were made to be able to still meet those policies.
And I've not looked at the policy recently, um, but I do believe that practice, whether it's stated in the policy or not. Has been that if the department. Must buy the vehicle, um, and they don't have it out of VR and R, they eat the rest of it out of their budget.
Interesting.
Additionally, there was an, an email that was forwarded to me last night in re, um, regards to this and. To move forward, um, and the term loan came into play and that is an option. Um, we can, the county, the board can loan the dollars. Um, Greg, Treasurer Greg Gallagher would need to be brought into that. Um, we cannot loan it out of five oh two, though. We can't loan it out of VR and R, the, all the dollars within that account. Within that fund are accounted specifically to an account. Now, it's currently being audited for reallocation. But at this point in time, we can't loan out of that, but we can loan out of one twenty five. With the loan, will come an interest rate and. The treasurer would have to draft those documents and for whatever those would be. And. Then that would have to be paid back by the department.
Right, but that, that seems messier than like if she's saying, you just haven't paid out of their budget and they had to do a supplemental for five grand. And you sweep it in later and you don't have to do all the documents and make all the other elect officials. I'm not saying that that's what I'm recommended doing, it just seems like that one is the less painful for everybody. If the.
So supplementals are for unexpected. Um, expense or emergency expenses that come up during the year. I would just caution that we, we don't make, we don't make supplementals as. What's the terms I'm looking for too? Just be careful with the supplementals because as things, as the financial situation of the county continues to go forward in the direction that we believe that it is. Um, it's going to be harder and harder, so just not that the precedence of. Of, okay. I really want this right now.
I get that and I'm not saying that that's where I'm going because I'm not making a decision on whether they get a vehicle or not until this policy is changed and I can go out to bid. Because I might be able to go out to bid and they can get it for forty one thousand and we're arguing over peanuts that we shouldn't be arguing over. They might get it for forty two thousand, one hundred and five dollars and I need to make them just do a supplemental for a hundred dollars.
And hopefully you didn't think that as, as me saying that you're saying that I just needed.
Before we get anywhere, I want to, I want to change the policy.
About supplementals and, and for those that are listening, because we haven't had our budget training yet, so they might not be in the complete know of the financial state of the county.
And I would also make sure that. Maybe going forward, if you see that somebody has the same replacement value numbers they did the year before. If they're not listening to you and adjusting it, you might want to bring it to the board's attention so we can ask them sitting right there. Why haven't you adjusted your number? We can hold them accountable because I have no problem holding them accountable, but I gotta know about it. But we would have to give you the direction to tell us that.
Fair enough, um, I, you know, I prefer to just try and.
Right, but if they.
Discuss with the, the department. I mean, we did have a discussion, they felt comfortable with the number. Maybe they changed their mind and didn't want to go with a Colorado, maybe the Colorado is forty two thousand. But now they're not replacing it with a Colorado, they're wanting to replace it with. A Ram, a Ram at that point in time.
Depending on the Colorado, here's an MSRP of thirty eight, there's one of.
I mean, maybe it was forty two.
Forty two, forty seven, I mean, it looks pretty thirty eight, forty two, but if their Dodge is different than Chevy.
Right.
And but that's just it, they might be able to get a Chevy from across the street for forty two, but because there's none on Bud Clary's lot up there, they gotta get a Ram.
I, I definitely do not want to speculate, I just wanted to make sure that, that the board and I were on the same page as to what the policies and.
Thank you, so the process, uh, it sounds like Commissioner Christopher is very interested in changing the policy. Um, to move forward and the timeline for changing that policy might be a month or two. Um, and it sounds like Commissioner Christopher is asking for um, the ability for, to go out for bids and then we can reject or accept one of the bids. And if we reject the bids, we could then go to the state contract and just purchase off of that. It might be less than the bids, the state contractor might bid, we don't know. Um, and so I'd first like to get um, uh, the board's opinion on that. Um, whether we move forward with that because that involves staff time to work on updating those policies. Commissioners, do you have any thoughts?
It seems to me that Mr. Christopher. Has a sensible way of approach if we can save money. If we have another option where we're not tied to one option, if we can. Search our locales and look for rigs and take bids and not have to bring something in from Seattle. I like that, that we have. That ability to potentially save money.
And I believe if we buy, purchase something from bid from, from another state like Oregon, we pay the sales tax. But that sales tax revenue comes back to Clickatac County. If we buy it from the state bid contract, it, that sales tax revenue stays in that county where we bought it from. Is that, does anybody know that for certain?
That's right.
Yeah, actually, that's where you purchase the vehicle, sale tax stays where the sales tax, where the purchase is made.
Where, it's where you take delivery.
It's where you take delivery.
So typically, the vehicle is delivered here and then it's charged the seven point eight percent.
But I thought they changed that because of the airplane rule. Because that's why we used to get airplanes here is because they would take delivery in Clickatac County. And they changed it to you pay for where the, the dealer is, you might say. So I would suggest we look back into that because.
So either way, um, I just brought that up as, as a possible reason for talk, moving forward with this. Um, I, I think, you know, the gorgeous one community, um, I like that. The bids that we got um, for the four trucks and how much lower they were than the bids for. Um, the state bid contract um, would have been, um, I think that is a reasonable, rational and logical way to move forward and I would be. Um, interested in moving forward with that, making sure that that's something that we can do is reject all the bids, we don't have to go with a bid.
I would just suggest maybe a month is a little, is a little, um. Little soon because I'm, depending on who drafts it, it's going to have to go through legal review.
I don't, I don't have a timeframe. And, and as far as I'm concerned, unfortunately, the building department is on hold. In my mind, until I can get this done and go out to bid, which is a whole nother month. And that's going to put whatever deadline on whatever deadline, but that's because. The dollar amount wasn't updated. And we move on from there.
So with that though, um, it would be my, my perspective that, that we move forward with that change and we allow it to happen for anything. Because the goal is we're looking to save money and that's one possible way of saving money. Um, but I still think um, that part of that policy that, that every May you updated with. The state bids, we, at least we know we're going to get that much money to match the state bid. And you never know, it might go up way more than five percent, it might go up fifteen percent, you might have to kick extra dollars and. That I totally understand, I totally respect, um, in terms, so, so if we can move forward with that and we've got consensus. I could move on to the next question in line of thought I have is, is that currently, um, I know you guys have been cross training. Um, and how often is there two people going out at the same time currently um. In different vehicles um, to sites that we're going to need that second vehicle right now?
Going this week, this week, we did take out a second vehicle because we're really slammed this week. But it's really coming this summer is basically summer through fall, our busy season is when we run two vehicles. Which we have our vehicle logs from last year for you, if you guys would like to look at what those are.
I also have the annual miles for each.
And remind me again, when was the last time you drove, the department drove? The vehicle that needs to be replaced, when was the last time it was on the road?
We did not drive it till last year when it came back from the mechanic and he said, do not drive this vehicle until this is done. It has been grounded since then.
While we're waiting for the policy to be updated. I would recommend that the board uh, advises the building department to get that to an authorized dealer. For diagnosis. And that will also give us more information.
This vehicle also has a, like, during the budget build process back May, it. Was already just a few thousand miles short of a hundred fifty thousand miles after reviewing the recording, I believe, um. Director Ward had mentioned, um, it was roughly a hundred fifty three thousand miles, so. Within that timeframe, it wasn't parked and grounded, it at least gone five thousand miles.
All right, I'm going to pull my.
Roughly.
Pull that thought.
But.
Is it the mileage?
Uh, the board, the board can.
It, it's, to me, it's total risk reward because you might get down there and they might be able to diagnose it as something stupid for. Four hundred bucks and you can drive it another year. Um, they might have to tell you, we have to pull the oil pan and pull all the rod and main bearings off and. Yeah, you need rod and main bearings and it's going to be eight thousand dollars and oh, by the way, you owe us three hundred bucks to tell you that. Based on the fact that it's, it's ready for surplus anyway. I think risk reward, we probably just park the damn thing, start it up occasionally just to make sure the thing still starts. And, and get it out of here.
Just for consideration, I'm, and I'm not sure, I only look at the fleet vehicles once a year. Um, is there a fleet vehicle that would be sufficient to where we could do what we did with senior services? And just be like, okay, well, this is going to be your temporary main vehicle, we'll, we'll designate it for you for now and not let anybody else check it out.
Um, the issue is we have a, what, what is it, a Traverse, what is it? Okay, we have a Traverse, we have an Explorer, we have a Caravan. They don't want the Caravan and technically they don't want either of the other ones, they want a truck. And.
Well, I understand that this would be a temporary thing, um, I mean. The, the budget wasn't.
Were to do, I think it would end up being the Traverse or the Caravan, which I'm pretty sure they don't want the Caravan. Um, and I have no problem doing that, but I also don't want to check it out to them. And then just kind of have it sitting there and not being used. So, but by all means, if they need it for a week or three weeks in a row or whatever, then just check it out for three weeks or three months.
I, I was wondering if there was a way for it to be priority building and it be like one of the last things to get checked out from by anybody else.
They're not going to like it, but.
Go ahead.
I will say, I understand your idea. And just for future, I personally drove the Traverse out of Bickleton and I could not make the inspection. You need to understand, like, we go out when the roads are not even roads yet, there are sometimes fields, it is rough rock. I bottomed out four times in the Traverse before I called in and I said. I know I'm not supposed to not make an inspection, but I don't know if I can physically get there.
Fair enough.
That is the reality to where we go, I was in the middle of nowhere, I had to walk. Because there's no cell service where I was at. So I under, I like your, I, I understand your idea, I, I understand what we're trying to figure out. But if there's times where we don't take it, you also need to understand, it's not that we don't want the vehicle, it's that. I have a higher chance that I am not going to be able to get there depending on where my inspection is.
Okay, so Chevy Traverse ground clearance, seven point five inches.
So it's, it's roughly one inch shorter than a Ram truck.
The, well, correct, but.
The accessory's office also travels some of those same roads in their Traverse.
Chevy Traverse, seven point five inches. Chevy Colorado, seven point nine inches. So you are dealing with half an inch difference between the Traverse and a truck.
I, I have a question though too, what does Jean drive?
Jean drives a Dodge Ram.
Okay, so on your list of upcoming inspections, when you know you're going to have one in one of those, is it? Can you trade off where you guys are going so he can take the pickup and go to the worst one for the day? Could you make that decision?
We can do our best, but all of it is, we divided, say, like.
Yeah, you try to stay in a location.
So with summertime coming, I will try to maybe do, put a Tet Lyle, which ran down court and he's trout lake, like with, like salmon. You know, depending on where the roads are, you can do that, but there are times where. If I'm on a brand new site and that thing's been done yet or he has, you know, you need the one that has the required clearance. You know.
That's right, it's better clearance than Chevy Colorado, I'll give you that.
How often does that happen to you though? That you have.
The Chevy Traverse once, I only checked it out once, but that's when I needed hunting.
Yeah, because I think about those sites, we talked about that the other day, that if somebody's building, they're having to get. Things in and out too, so. Um, that one that was probably the worst of the worst.
If.
It depends on where they're located, you know, a lot of these, these are some of what we build are. It's a seasonal cabin, it's, you know, they're, it's not a residential.
Yeah, but their first step should have to, you know, bring a dozer or a loader or something and scratch out some kind of road.
Well, and I, I think the bottom line of it is, is we need to change policy. And that's going to take us some time, so if you guys can find a workaround and a way to, and if the Traverse is available. Um, that might be your stopgap for now until we can get the policy changed.
I, I just wanted to make it clear, like, I have. No. Um, care and, and no opinion in regards to which direction this goes, um, I just needed to make it clear. So the board um, knew exactly what directive is given to every department every year. You know, and, and what the board's options were. And, and what, what would take, what it would take to pick one of those options, so.
And I appreciate that because with our budgets, I keep thinking about we're kind of dying the death of a thousand cuts.
Yes.
So we're starting to put Band-Aids. We're starting to put Band-Aids and stitches and things on things.
The Dodge caravan's got five point eight inches.
You trade.
Looking for new vehicles. Um, odds are some of those, um, might be able to. See a years more life. I know George is looking for a truck, which might free up his fleet vehicle. Uh, maybe we can designate one of those to you guys to get through the rest of the year, depending on what decision ends up getting made. Um, huh? Ideally, he wants a truck though, and he ain't gonna get it other than taking a hand me down. Well, it's, it's a hand me down or what he's got.
And I think that.
So I'm just saying, there's other options to get us forward.
I mean, that statement is accurate. Every year we build a budget, you know, and, and directors build a budget on what they expend. Anticipate expending to purchase a vehicle when the time comes, um, and the budget's not there, so. Now, now what do we do? You know, um, and like you said, Commissioner, not everybody gets a choice either. Um, if you don't have the money, then. You know, there are the options alone. Wait to build the balance up to what it needs to be. Um, temporary workarounds, whatever those are, but that is definitely for the board to work out with the director.
Yeah, and I'm not even interested.
And, and there need to be policy change in order, we just need to make sure that we're crossing our Ts, dotting our Is when we do those workarounds.
Until we can do the policy thing where we can check what the actual vehicle price is. I don't know what a workaround or if there would even need to be a workaround, so. Other than the date of which they have to purchase of April sixteenth. Uh, but if that's. The least of our problems, I'm not gonna have a problem with it, with a. Slap on the wrist of going forward, put the right dollar number down and save me the headache.
And, and I don't even consider, you, and I'm not here to. Determine that anybody needs a slap on the wrist. Like, like I said, the four, forty-two thousand dollars could have been the price of the Colorado and, and we changed our minds mid-year. And want a Ram. I don't know those things. Um, but. These are just the options that the board has to work with the director.
So no, I'm, I'm good to go. And if we get the policy, maybe she gets a Colorado and it's that price. But until then.
Is, so if we do not have a workaround before the April sixteenth, should we go ahead then and? I'm wanting to know, like, it's like for us to take back, if we do not have an answer, do we need to, do we need to go with the April sixteenth purchase? For this next year? Or will you have an answer to us before then of which route?
I, I believe part of the, uh, workaround will also be, um, null and void that. April date. When we try and push things through and rush things, we tend to get in trouble.
Don't move forward with the purchase.
No.
Yeah. Yeah, hopefully that was, yeah. Uh, consensus.
So.
Yes, again.
Any other questions for me?
No. Oh, I don't think so.
Auditor.
Who is, um, revising this policy?
She asked.
Then you look at all of my precincts.
Wait, and I have her auditing five oh two.
Did you say I'll do it?
What happened?
No, I thought you said you would revise the policy.
No.
That's what I understood.
He would look at my precincts.
No, I heard him saying would, I would do the policy.
If I break the policy, review the policy.
Okay.
I don't know, I'm not gonna revise the policy, so.
Heather just wants to stay with us today. Look at her.
She's like, it's way funnier.
Nothing else to do.
Thank you.
Except apparently write a new vehicle policy. With the other vehicle policy and the travel policy and all the other policies that were working on.
She's just changing the sentence and allowing us to go out to bid. Should be fine.
I see.
Thank you.
Scott, did you have something else for us today?
Watch out, there's a crowd here.
I, I listened to you. You did a good job. No, thank you. I didn't have anything else. I came down to support Erica because I heard just a little bit. I was distracted and I don't think it was anything more important than keeping our, our team members safe when they're out in the field with this Erica Denise. Um, you know, so many of them out there and I do not want them in bad vehicles. So if that means getting all the directors together for a workshop like this and figuring out how we do that. And the interim, I, I'm all for it. Just want to support it.
An inch of ground clearance is the difference between them.
Oh, I'm not talking about that. I'm not criticizing. Let's get, let's get.
I don't know if we, um, ever surplused, uh, the old Jeep I drove around for well monitoring or not. And that might be a possibility. It's, it's a clunker, but I drove it for years.
But like, it, it could be something as far as that traverse has bad shocks on it. Which means it does this as you go over bumps, which means your ground clearance doesn't maintain seven and a half. It goes from three and a half to ten and a half. And that could be why she's bottoming.
Sounds like we need to send a lift so you could look at them for us.
Put me on the hire and I'll go do it.
Oh.
Has the Explorer been checked out much?
Yeah.
Down there.
And has checked it out to take it on the, oh, for.
But they're not going for by him.
Have more, isn't the Explorer and the Traverse fairly similar?
No, the Explorer is higher.
A little bit.
Okay. Okay.
The Explorer is the same, um, height as the truck.
Okay.
Believe it or not.
Yeah, so.
That'd be a great idea.
Yeah, so I think we're gonna do.
Okay.
Yeah, in other words.
You have to let him know.
You might actually throw down the offer of the caravan. Because if they're hauling food and I'm serious.
They're not hauling food.
Oh, okay. I'm just saying if they're hauling food or medical supplies or something, maybe they want a caravan.
We appreciate.
It's the whole purpose of.
I think it's important.
The.
Yeah, it is. The vehicle thing has been, uh, an ongoing struggle here for. A year now.
Yeah.
We're getting there.
Money we've saved.
Yeah, it's on the improvement track.
I still want to compile all the data from all the microchips that we put in.
Yes.
And see that information.
Yes.
That will help us decide whether we're looking at it deeper and potentially sucking more vehicles out of departments and into fleets.
Yes.
And or disposed of.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Hey.
Agreed. Hmm, good to know.
Yeah.
Um, does that mean, who was in charge? Was Rob in charge of the fleet thing? All right, well, well, before we adjourn, maybe he can step back in the room and we can give him that direction. To compile data for us. Or I can just tell him afterwards.
You, you could just talk to him.
I know, but I want to make sure he's got consensus. I mean, he knows he's got consensus. I'll just tell him he's got consensus.
Yeah.
It's fine.
I'll just tell him afterwards.
Stepped out of the room. Um, you wanted to schedule with the community commissioner next month? Was there a topic, uh, just?
Update with them for the year. Um.
You'll have to create an agenda, which I'm sure you'll put coroner's discussion on the agenda.
Corner discussion, finance, software discussion, um, look at the last two agendas. Those are probably pretty good.
They will probably come up with ideas to throw in there.
They will.
No, no, finance, software.
I'd like, uh, to have a discussion about Columbia River Gorge Commission with them on updates and discussions.
Oh, good one. Uh, anything on my head? No, uh, I did respond, I did receive a response from Joel Mastin. He is going to move forward with the CDS request. Um, so, um, he would like a letter of support for, um, you know, just for his CD. We can put forward our, our list. These are the two.
Letter, but also.
But then also just a single dealer letter for his CDS request. He did say they did get two and a half million from the twenty-two spending bill. Um, on their last CDS, they had three more point two million from the state that they had to remit. Um, through the granite competitive grant.
That's why they're still short.
That's why they're short.
Cause I thought this would have got them across the finish line with the, the.
But it took so long.
The dog shelter money they took, they couldn't get the shelter bill.
Yep.
So he said, yes, so is that consensus?
That, yeah, no, that makes sense. No good.
And letter of support.
Yes.
The board just came up with consensus that it's time for us to look at fleet. Management software tracking and get spreadsheets of those, all those vehicles that have chips in them. So that we can look over said data. And decide whether we want to expand that program and or move vehicles around inside the. So. Uh, in, um, Alyssa already put it on the agenda for next Tuesday. To go over the data, so. He thought it was serious.
We had him for a good second there.
No, whenever you, uh, find free time in your busy schedule, sir. We just want to look at it, it's time. So even if it's a month or two from now, it's time. And we're running out of fleet cars, so I might need to steal a few more.
That was it.
And that was all that was on our agenda. Anything else?
Um, before we adjourn, I need to, is anyone going to the Cattlemen's banquet Saturday night?
Yep.
Signed up for it.
Okay, so, um.
Yes.
We never made that, so, um, is everybody ready for a motion?
Yes.
Yep.
Uh, Madam Chair, I would make a motion to adjourn the B O C C meeting, noting that we will be back in session at nine AM. On Tuesday, the twenty-sixth, the, um, county commissioners, uh, will be attending the Cattlemen's banquet on Saturday, the twenty-third. At five PM.
I will second the motion.
Motion in a second, any discussion?
Quick one.
Yes.
Um, I don't think we have to acknowledge if we're all going to the same place, as long as we're not there talking about county business. It's not a public meeting. So as long as we're not getting up to speak.
I don't know.
Republican Party.
I don't know if they'll ask any of us to speak or not, so I wanted to make sure it was on there.
That's, that's good cover. I don't think we'll need it, but it's cover. Good call. Discussion over.
Okay, all those in favor?
I.
I.
I oppose hearing none. Thank you. We've adjourned our workshop for.